Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good to see so many of you out tonight and welcome to our first meeting in November. Can you believe it's already November? I guess so. Thank you for being here. We will begin our meeting this evening as we customarily do and I'll ask the town clerk if she will call the roll.
Mayor Marshburn.
I'm present.
Mayor Pro Tim Vance.
Here.
Councilmember Behringer.
Here.
Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger.
Here.
And Councilmember Matthews.
Okay, thank you. We have full attendance and I know some of our council members are struggling with a little sickness, so appreciate everybody coming out and being here tonight. I'm going to recognize now Councilmember Kathy Behringer who will lead us in our pledge of allegiance and also be responsible for our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and ever to be just as for all.
Thank you. Maybe you see.
Join me if you like. Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening with many requests. We humbly ask you to have mercy on those who are in war-torn countries and suffering the ravages of war, something like most of us do not know. And Father, we ask you that as we approach Veterans Day toward the end of this week, that we remember, take time to remember, the sacrifices made by generation after generation of veterans that gave so much to preserve our freedoms. And Lord, we ask you for wisdom as we make decisions regarding the well-being of our town. Give us understanding and patience and help us to make the right decisions. Amen.
Thanks so much, Ms. Behringer. Okay, our first order of business always is something we call petitions and comments. If you came for that purpose, you're encouraged to sign up, but we will potentially recognize you if you haven't done that. Madam Clerk, do we have any person signed up for petitions and comments?
Yes, sir, we do not.
Is there any person here who had come with the expectation that you had an issue you wanted to address to the council? Seeing and hearing none, I don't think I will read the preamble to that at this time, so we'll move right into the next section of our agenda, which is the adoption of the agenda. And I understand maybe council desires to make some modification of the order, so I will hear from council with a motion on adoption of the agenda.
Mayor, I approve, I motion that we approve the agenda with the modification of switching item two under new and old business, Everstead at White Oak, with item three, Spring Drive Town Homes.
Second. And Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add, for the closed session, a personnel matter.
Okay, yes.
I'll accept that as amendment to the motion.
And we will give a site later on when we get ready to go into closed session, I believe. That okay? All right, council, you've heard the amendment made by Mr. Dellinger. I believe we had a second, and so if you're in favor of adopting the agenda with those changes, would you vote aye?
Aye.
There's opposition? No, and there is none? All right, thank you very much. I'm pleased to note that we have two presentations tonight. The first is a proclamation recognizing November, this month, as National American Indian Heritage Month. I've asked Mayor Pro Tim Elmo Vance, if he will, to come and share that proclamation. It'll be Mr. Greg Richardson. Greg, where are you? Okay, if you'd come forward, sir, we're going to present that to him and give him a chance to make some comments as well. So, Mr. Vance, I recognize you, sir.
Okay. It's good to meet you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. American Indian Heritage Month 2022, whereas North Carolina, American Indian Heritage Month creates an opportunity to honor and celebrate the great history and heritage of the American Indian people who live and work in North Carolina, and whereas, American Indians have resided in this region of the United States for more than 12,000 years, and whereas, today, more than 130,032 American Indians are residing in North Carolina, according to the 2020 U.S. Census, a lone population, and represent the second-largest American Indian population east of the Mississippi River, and the seventh-largest American Indian population in the United States. Whereas, North Carolina is the home of the eight seven-recognized tribes, the Corey, the Eastern Band of Cherokee, the Hiloa, Supai, apologize by Mr. [inaudible], okay, the Lumbee, and the Marin, and the Ochi, Oknichi, Oknichi, okay, I apologize for mispronunciation, and the Span, and the band of the Spano, Spanoni Nation, the Spanpon, and the Wakanma, Wakanma, and Suyu. And whereas, North Carolina is the home of the four urban Indian organizations that hold membership on the North Carolina Commission of Indian Affairs, and they are the Cumberland County Association of the Indian People, the Guilford Nation Native American Association, the Metroline Native American Association, and the Triangle Native American Society. And whereas, many of these citizens are residents of the town of Garner, and whereas, American Indians and the Indian tribes can contribute immensely to the economy of North Carolina through educational attainment, economic development, job creation. Whereas, on November 19th, the 27th Indian Heritage Month celebration will be held at the North Carolina Museum of History in Raleigh through a collaboration between the North Carolina Commission of Indian Affairs, North Carolina Museum of History, Indian Tribes, and Organizations. And whereas, North Carolina's 2022 American Heritage Month theme is celebrating North Carolina's first people. And now, therefore, I can, Marshburn, Mayor of North, of the town of Garner, proclaim November 2022 as American Indian Heritage Month in the town of Garner and commend its observance by our citizens. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the great seal of the town of Garner, North Carolina, to be affixed thus the seventh day of November 2022. Ken Marshburn, Mayor.
Thank you so much. And thank you to the councilmen of the town of Garner, Mayor Marshman, and to the citizens of this county, this community. This is indeed an honor to receive this proclamation, and I receive it on behalf of the American Indian citizens that reside in this town and also in this state. So if it's, if it's proper, I'd like to ask all the people in the audience at this council meeting tonight to stand who have American Indian or Native American heritage. And also, I'm going to ask my neighbors from Greenbrier to stand who is here today to witness this exciting time in history, this moment in time. So if you would stand in this moment, Mayor.
Yes, please. Yep, absolutely.
These are people representing our American Indian Native American population in your city.
I think a round of applause is appropriate.
Forget to mention that I have a gift for you, Mayor.
Oh, no, no, no.
And the council members and staff, I have the 2022 Indian Heritage Month posters here for the town.
Well, I'll receive that on behalf of the council.
Thank you.
An event coming up that we all need to be aware of.
Oh, yes. Thank you for reminding me. November the 19th will be the Indian Heritage Month celebration for the state. It'll be downtown at the Museum of History, it'll start at 11:30. It's a family event, it will run from about 11:30 to 4:00. So you get an opportunity to see demonstrations, American Indian dance, and you'll see the American Indian culture there alive being demonstrated there. So bring the family, come on out and be with us on November the 19th at the North Carolina Museum of History. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Just as Mr. Hodges is coming up, Greg, let me just say, I've known you over the years and I really appreciate your coming out and being available to us. You're always such a very positive individual and I've always been impressed with your leadership, so thank you for your kind comments and we'll thank you for the posters, we'll open them up a little later on.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bass, I believe, wanted to make a comment, so I'm going to recognize her.
I do, if you don't mind, I just want to...
Would you want to come to the mic? Those of you who may not know, this is, many of you know Judy Bass. Judy is our retired, or one of our retired town clerks, so good to see you tonight, Ms. Bass.
Well, we have been working with Greg Richardson on a program that is going to take place at the library on November the 21st from 10:30 to 11:30. Marvel Welch, who was in the audience, will do a presentation. She is a member of the Eastern Band Cherokee Indians and one of the eight recognized tribes in North Carolina, and she will share her extensive knowledge of Native American history. And she will also have some art and some other artifacts, and the Historical Society will also have some artifacts that are related to Garner at the same, same event on the 19th. And then on November the 12th, the Historical Society will have a special exhibit just for the day from 11 to 2:00. And we will also feature Native American artifacts from the Garner area.
Okay.
I just wanted to let you know about those two.
Thank you, thank you so much. It's good to know of these upcoming activities and I encourage all of our citizens to participate and engage in those as they have opportunity to do so. Rick, I don't guess we had a camera shot for anybody, so, but it's okay. Yeah, all right. Thank you very much. Thank you all. Okay, I'm now going to move to the second item under presentation, and that is a Economic Development Annual Report and Staff Introductions, and I believe Assistant Manager John Hodges is going to lead this portion of our agenda. John?
Mayor, members of council, before we begin our annual report tonight from the Economic Development Department, it's my great pleasure to introduce the newest member of our Economic Development Team, Mr. Nate Grover. I'm going to ask Nate to come up. Nate joined us two weeks ago as our Economic Development Director. He has over 11 years of experience in economic development at both the state, regional, and local level. He has served the state of North Carolina with the Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina, where he worked lots of economic development projects, some of which you would know by name. And he's also worked here in Garner with myself and our former Economic Development Director, so he was no stranger to the community when he decided he was interested in taking this position. So we're very happy to have Ned with us here, joining our team. I'm going to ask him to make a few comments and then we'll get on with our Economic Development Annual Report presentation.
Thank you, John. Mayor, council members, just want to thank you for the opportunity to serve. It's an honor to serve and I look forward to working with you all to make Garner the best place in North Carolina, to operate a business and to live. Thank you.
Thank you so much and welcome. We think there's a good team of staff here and welcome to that. I'm sure you will, you will add a lot to it and we look forward to great things coming from you and your departments here now. Thank you, sir. Okay.
Also with us tonight is Shayla Douglas, our Downtown and Small Business Development Manager, and you'll hear from her a little bit later in the presentation as well. Each year, we do produce an annual report of economic development activity. We produce this primarily as an online publication. We do have a hard copy for the council members at your place tonight, but we do publish this online. You can find this on our town website under Economic Development, and it actually flips through like a magazine, so there's lots of statistics here about our community, some in particular that we wanted to make note of tonight. In the upper right corner here are the numbers for what we call RFI's, Request for Information, and this is sort of the backbone of some of the business recruitment activity that our department does every year. We had 85 requests for information come in this past year. They represent over 25,000 potential new jobs and over $15 billion in potential new investment. One of the, the two of the sectors that make up three-fourths of that are advanced manufacturing and life sciences, and these are both industries that we have worked to target in the last few years. The image on the bottom right, INC. 4300, is a good example of a project in our community that is being developed now that will address both life sciences and advanced manufacturing. This is the former Kmart building on Fayetteville Road, so if any of you have ever seen that building, you may know that it doesn't look anything like that at the moment, but construction has begun on this project, and this will be 180,000 square feet of space available for those sectors as well as creative office space. We also have a really unique opportunity with a 225-acre tract of land being called the E District, that is at White Oak Road, Tri, Timber Drive, sorry, and Highway 70. This is a unique opportunity for Garner to potentially have one of the only medical anchored mixed-use sites, especially of this size anywhere in the area, so stay tuned for more information about that. We also have a big focus on entrepreneurship and small business within our economic development program. Last year, we created Launch Garner, which is an entrepreneurship training program done in partnership with Wake Tech and Community Partners. We're excited that we graduated our first cohort from Launch last year, and we will graduate another cohort of business leaders that are learning more about entrepreneurship in two weeks, another group that is finishing this program. And this program is unique in that it is a really truly a community-wide partnership. We have not only the town being a partner with Wake Tech, but also our two economic development nonprofits, the Garner Economic Development Corporation and the Downtown Garner Association, our Chamber of Commerce is a partner, as well as both of our Rotary Clubs in town. This was a program that was actually brought to North Carolina by Rotarian, who's a friend of mine, and as a Rotarian, I'm very proud that we could do this as our economic development programming as well as a Rotary-based project. Lots of exciting things happening for our future that the Garner Economic Development Corporation is helping us out with, that is one of our nonprofit economic development partners. They're helping us with site selection and determining best areas for site selection and site control for other jobs-based development. They're also sponsoring work... They're also sponsoring work that we do in the area high schools. So we have the Garner Entrepreneurs of Tomorrow program that we operate with our local high schools. And last year, we completed our first pitch night, so students could develop a business plan and actually present it, sort of Shark Tank-like. And we actually, the GEDC actually provided laptops to the winners of the students whose business plans were selected as winners of the pitch night. Also on your right is a photograph of the first recipients of a scholarship endowment that the GEDC made at Wake Tech. So that endowment will allow a high school senior from each of our two high schools to receive a full tuition at Wake Tech each year in perpetuity. And I'm going to ask Shayla Douglas, our Downtown and Small Business Development Director, to come up and talk a little bit about the Downtown Development Program and DGA.
Welcome, Ms. Douglas.
Hi, everyone. So this past fiscal year has been an exciting one for DGA, as Councilman Behringer and Councilwoman Behringer and Councilman Behringer can attest to as being members. So we saw $1.63 million in investment in downtown, 1.5 million of that coming from private investment, including new construction, acquisition of property, and facade rehabilitation to our current businesses. We also saw 20 jobs added to the downtown district, 12 part-time and 8 full-time. We saw three new businesses come to downtown, including Nana's Little Sweets, our bakery. We also saw Sweet Pea's Urban Gardens at the end of the historic district come, and we also have a warehouse at 404 East Main Street now. And then our current businesses, we had three businesses do expansions, one of them being Ball and Miner, expanded, and then we also had, they expanded their physical business. We also had businesses expand as far as product sales and what products they are selling. As far as volunteer hours, we had 560 volunteer hours, which calculates up to almost $16,000 value, according to the North Carolina Commerce Department. And with all of this growth, we are running out of space in downtown, and we were lucky to receive over a million dollars from Congresswoman Deborah Ross to build a parking lot off Rand Mill Road that will add 59 parking spaces to downtown. So, and since this report has come out, we have also added another business, Zen Yoga Downtown. So downtown is growing, and we continue to see growth, and we have lots more projects in the works for 2023. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Shayla joined our team back in May, and she's been doing a great job in her expanded role. The role previously focused just on downtown development, and we've added small business development to her role. I do want to thank, though, a couple of folks, because this year, this report ended the year of June 30, in June 30 of 2022. Joe Stallings, our former Economic Development Director, was responsible for many of the accomplishments you see in this report tonight from an overall town-wide economic development standpoint, so we want to thank him for his hard work. I also want to thank Mari Howe, who is on virtually tonight. Mari was our former Downtown Development Director for a number of years, and not only do we want to thank her for all the work she did in downtown development over the years and the part of this report you see, but this report is actually a work product of Mari's, and she's still with us now as Special Projects Manager, but she's also very talented and shares that talent with us to help produce this report every year. So we want to thank both of those team members that have served in previous roles with us. That concludes our report tonight. For the benefit of the public, again, you can find our report on the town's website, garnernc.gov, under Economic Development. And I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any, Mayor.
Going to say, I'm certainly going to give council an opportunity to make comments or ask questions, and just for the edification of the public, I don't know if it's necessary, but we understand all the acronyms we use. The GEDC is the Garner Economic Development Corporation, which was formed any number of years ago, back when the old ConAgra plant had a terrible problem there, and we put together that organization to market that property where Amazon eventually built on and came to. So thank you for mentioning that. And I know Mr. Vance, I believe, on our council still serves on that. Is that right, Mr. Vance?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, council, I'll start with Ms. Behringer, maybe, if you have any comments, questions regarding this presentation.
I had an opportunity to see this report last week. This is so exciting. We are growing, and we're continuing to grow and move forward. One of my favorite phrases, I know people get tired hearing me say it, but is, good enough is the enemy of best, and I think we're headed toward best, and I appreciate all the effort put into that, because you never finish with the job. You always have another level, and I appreciate all the effort going into those.
Thanks for the work that everyone's done in putting this out and looking for bigger and better things in the future.
Okay, we'll go to Mr. Behringer.
Yeah, thanks for the report. We've had a strong staff for a long time, working downtown and throughout the town to bring businesses here. I'd single out Shayla. She kind of came very recently, but she's really stepped up, and it's been very active downtown. There's been a lot to learn. She's done great getting out there. And just as far as general economic development, I think we'll be in a good position as long as we do everything we can to protect our commercial development opportunities and recruit aggressively to fill those, so.
Very good report, and you're absolutely correct. We had some guests in from Texas this weekend, and Sunday, we went down there walking down and went down to Zen Yoga, which is a new place down there, and very fascinating place. And with all the growth and new houses, it's really going to jump off probably 10 years from now. We won't even realize what it looked like back in the days, so, but just keep on keeping what you're doing. It's really coming together.
And Mr. Vance?
I would just echo what the council's already said, a very good report. I've had the opportunity to work with both the Garner Economic Development Corporation and also when the DGA was, the GRA, the Garner Revitalization Association, and the challenges there, and it's just a testimony of what great planning can do and moving forward with the Town of Garner and with the great businesses that are coming in. But I would say, in particularly, but one major one that came in was Amazon that began to explode that area, and it's been the impetus for the improvements that are going, that are being proposed now for other bond projects, such as the Garner Jones Sausage Road Improvement. So great job, great staff, and I look forward to seeing what's coming forward in the future.
Okay, thank you, sir. And I certainly concur with all the comments made by council, and would note that when I moved here over 30 years ago, needless to say, the area we call downtown looked considerably different then, and we've made a lot of progress over the years. Sometimes it's been slow, but hopefully it's steady, and I think we're on a good, right track, and hopefully that will continue, and I'm sure it will, under some of the new leadership we have now. So thank you very much, John. Okay. All right. The next item for approval is the consent agenda. I believe there are nine items on the consent agenda. What say you, council, about approving that?
I most...
Move.
Second.
Okay. Properly motioned and seconded. If you favor approving the consent agenda, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
If there's any opposition, no, and there is none. Okay, we now move to the segment of our agenda under Public Hearings, and I believe I made notes correctly that the amendment shifted item 1 to 2 and vice versa. Is that correct? Excuse me. I put my note in the wrong spot. So we will carry these forward as is. We have two public hearings. The first is special use permit, SUP SP 2207. I'll tell you what, maybe to save a little time, if you're here this evening and you expect to give testimony in either one of these public hearings, would you stand now and make your way back to the town clerk back there, and let's go ahead and get everybody sworn in? That way, we'll have that taken care of, and then I'll give you some further instruction as it relates to quasi-judicial hearings. I don't think anybody waiting outside is there. Take just a few minutes to take care of this.
I will sincerely, truly declare and affirm that the evidence you provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Okay, Ms. Gibson, do you think we probably have everybody properly sworn in now?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Okay, as I noted earlier, both of these hearings are described as quasi-judicial hearings, and so these instructions are given. Under state law, the parties are entitled to a fair hearing and an impartial decision-maker. And so I must ask council members, do any of you have a fixed opinion prior to the hearing that is not subject to change? Or have you had any ex parte communications and had, do you have any close familial business or other association or relationship with an affected person or have a financial interest in the outcome? How would you respond to that, any? Okay, this is a fact-finding hearing, and only competent material and substantial evidence that is not repetitive is allowed. Only expert witnesses based on training and experience may testify as to impacts on property values, traffic safety, or noise levels. Council members are only allowed to receive factual information during this hearing and are not allowed to discuss the case outside of the hearing. The town clerk has already sworn in the witnesses, so I am going to open the initial public hearing. And, Will, just give us your name, and you may begin. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council members, for having me here tonight. I'm Joe Saplinsky with the Planning Department, and I'm here to present on the Historic Banks House for a special use permit. The case is SUP SP 2207. The applicant is TMT LA Associates on behalf of Mary and Curtis Smalling, who live in Garner here. The location is 101 East Garner Road, and the property is a 1.9 parcel, 1.9-acre parcel close to downtown on East Garner Road. The request is to operate a bed and breakfast in their single-family house there, where they will be planning to live. This is an R4 lot, residential four. It meets the minimum lot requirements and the setbacks as well. Most of the work being done is on the back of the house and the site, as the house is already existing here, so it's not being newly constructed. Mr. and Mrs. Smalling hosted a meeting several weeks ago with approximately 50 letters going out to residents in that area within 1,000 feet on October 13th. Four people were in attendance and overall were supportive of the project. Here you can see the site plan. As mentioned, it's an existing house here. One of the, I can move this here, one of the changes of note, you'll see here is where the current entrance into the site is, and they're moving it back farther off of Creech Road here. You'll see a US 70s here. Here's Creech. They're moving it back about 75 feet, which creates a little safer access as you pull onto Creech off of 70 there. And the parking is in the back over here. Most of this is currently existing, so they mostly had to reconfigure this to accommodate for the presumed guests that they'll have on their site. The open space requirements for residential, it meets that excessively. Most of the back, I'll go back here, most of the back of the property here is all wooded and is not being touched. Parking, they required five parking spaces to accommodate for bed and breakfast employees and the rooms in the house there, and they're proposing nine, two of which will be accessible for EV charging stations. After sufficient review of plan revision, staff finds that this project is in compliance with the applicable standards of the Garner UDO, subject to the following conditions. Prior to issuance of building permit, payment of engineering inspection fees, if applicable, shall be paid to the Town of Garner. And prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy, Creech Road street lighting must be installed, and any required public right-of-way improvements must be constructed. And lastly, prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy, a fee in lieu of sidewalk along Creech Road, which is $25 per linear foot, shall be paid to the Town of Garner. Please refer to page 65 of your packet for the motion to approve or deny SUP SP 2207, the Historic Banks House Bed and Breakfast. Thank you. And I did want to note, there are three conditions. I initially had two in there.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, before you turn it over to the applicant, the permit application and the staff report contained in the agenda packet are offered as evidence in this case to be accepted into the record unless an objection is raised by the applicant or a person withstanding.
Before we go to the applicant, do any council members have a question for Mr. Saplinsky here regarding his presentation? Anybody? Okay. So I understand the applicant, the applicants, maybe I should say, are here, and I'll be happy to recognize them at this time, or maybe they're representative. Mr. Robert?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and everybody, council. Sort of pitch hitting here on the last minute, but Keith Roberts, 202 Bonica Creek Drive in Garner, and we are acting as the civil engineers for this project. Tony Tate's office is the applicant. They are the site planners, but as I was sitting there, I realized they are not here, and so I thought I might get up and say I am. So anyway, I am here to answer any questions that I can. Also, Ms. Mary Smalling is here as well, who is the owner. And if you have any specific questions for the house, staff did a good job there introducing the project, as was mentioned by the staff. It is an existing home, no expansion there with the home, just mainly internal upfits, and of course, adding the infrastructure on the exterior for parking, what would be needed for a bed and breakfast. Again, we're here to try to answer any questions that we can.
Okay, we'll see if there are some. So I'll start to my left. Mr. Matthews, any questions for Mr. Roberts?
No, sir.
Singleton?
No, sir.
Ms. Behringer? Behringer?
Questions related to the eight criteria? Nope.
Okay, Mr. Vance?
No questions.
Anything else you want to say?
That's it, other than Ms. Mary Smalling is here. She may want to introduce herself and a little bit about the house, and if you have any questions for her.
Sure.
Had the privilege of meeting Ms. Smalling some several months ago, I guess, when I learned of their plans to do this, and it was nice to meet you. It's nice to have you here, so make any comments you care to at this time.
Like he said, my name is Mary Smalling, and then my husband Curtis is with me tonight. You need to know our address where we live now?
Madam Clerk, which do you need? The current address?
Okay, 208 Griffin Street in Garner. We started working on the Banks House, as it was known, about three years ago, gutting it and getting it ready to be a bed and breakfast, and we're very excited to be a part of this community. We hope we can add something to the historic downtown area and even the historic museum that's in that area, too. So I'm here to answer any questions, if you have any.
Okay, council, questions for Ms. Smalling? I'll start down here this time, Will. Mr. Vance?
No questions.
Okay, anything?
Just a quick comment, like the mayor, I had, it was about a year or so ago, I was riding around, I think it was a Saturday, and I was curious what was going on over that way. Somebody said something's being built, so I pulled in the backyard, and I met you, and she gave me a quick tour of what was going on. It's all under construction at that time, and it was an amazing sight, what was being planned, and I think it's going to be a great addition to the community, so I look forward to going now. to going down soon to finish product.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that's all for you. Did the mister want to make any comments, or?
Thank you, just to say thank you, and thanks to Joseph and the planning staff for working with us for the last three years, and we are excited to be closer than ever, I guess, to opening. And, you know, we do feel a big sense of responsibility for the house. It's, as you know, one of only three properties that made the historic district a thing in Garner, and so we take that responsibility, you know, seriously and appreciate everybody who's shown their support for this use for the house. And we, you know, it's had a long history, and hopefully it'll be a good part of this new chapter of Garner's history as downtown really revitalizes. So, we're happy to be a part of that process.
Questions for this gentleman, anybody? Okay, I know you've, I guess I could call it sweat equity, I'm not sure that's the right term, but anyway, I know you've spent a goodly number of hours over there, because I've seen you working there, and I stopped by myself, and so appreciate the good work you're doing here, so we'll see. So long. I think that's all for now. Thank you. All right. Was there anyone else here for the applicant or owner? Mr. Roberts, you were pretty much the spokesperson, is that correct? Okay. All right, council, if there are not other questions or comments, well, excuse me, do I need to come back to you? Do you have further? Okay. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, and...
Can just confirm that there's no other members of the public that wish to speak on this?
Yes, you're right, okay. Sometimes I don't mean to forget that. Are there members of the public who are here this evening that desire to address the council on this matter? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we're ready to close the public hearing, which I will now do. And council, this matter is ripe for a motion at this time. If you need to have any preliminary discussion on the matter, now would be a time to initiate that. Anybody?
I'm prepared to make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I believe that's in order, Mr. Roberts.
Regarding SUP SP 22-07 Historic Banks House B&amp;B, and thank you for putting this on the screen, something new for us, which is really nice. I find that application SUP SP 22-07 meets the town's eight criteria for special use permits as identified in Article 3.9.2D as in Delta. Therefore, I move that the council approve SUP SP 22-7 Historic Banks House B&amp;B with the site-specific conditions of three, and listed on the permit that will be prepared by the staff.
Second.
Okay, council, you've heard the motion and the second, so the motion is properly for you at this time. I'm going to call for a vote, so if you favor the motion that has been made, would you vote aye?
Aye.
If there's opposition, vote no, and I believe it was a unanimous vote. So, thank you, council, and to the Smallings. Congratulations. I think I said to them, as I've traveled over the years, I've had occasion to stay at some bed and breakfasts around the country in different places, so my wife and I have enjoyed those, and I may have even made the comment that if this one gets open, I'm going to come over and spend a night over there at some point, so we'll wait until you get it ready and... Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate that. Mr. Roberts, thank you for being here. Okay, council, you see the next item there, I believe, is Ms. Allison Jones. There she is, I'm sorry. Come on up. We'll be presenting under item number two. Special use permit. SUP... Jones, I recognize you for your presentation. Good to see you both. Okay, we're ready.
Good evening. I'm here to present the site plan presentation for Green Barre Park Apartments, SUP SP 2109. Applicant, investment partners. The owner of parcels are David, Marilyn, and Larry and Rebecca. The location is located at Northwest Corner Grove Mountain Road and Timber Drive here in Garner, and the tract size is about a little less than 18 acres, at 17.8 acres. They're requesting to develop this tract into multifamily residential. Those uses multifamily. The current zoning, at the time of when the application was submitted, the zoning was MF1 with conditional District 253. After the town-wide rezoning, that changed to multifamily A, conditional District 253. The overlay district was at the time of Seminole, the Timber Drive overlay, is currently now the residential der fair overlay district. The setbacks are front setbacks, 35 feet. The rear is 25 feet, and any parcel that's adjacent to Timber Drive will have a 35-foot setback, and the side is 15, and the corner is rear, excuse me, the corner is 25, excuse me. Two neighborhood meetings held for this project. One was held on July 9th of 2021 at Garner Methodist Church, and the other was held on December 14th of 2021 at Garner United Methodist Church as well. Elevation shall have either lap or shakeboard siding, and with a brick accent. Open space requirements. Required to have 10% open space, which would equate to 1.7 acres. They're providing 11.63%. Open space areas will be owned and maintained by Green Barre Park HOA/Management. The required open space will be met by using existing qualifying wetland conservation areas and tree conservation areas to play field and active recreation areas that are being provided with the site plan. Tree coverage. A sliding scale of 10 and 12% at the time of Seminole of this site plan. The perimeter buffer to 25 feet minimum adjacent to existing single-family. The street buffers along timber drives are minimum 25 feet preserve, and Grove Mountain Road with 20 feet width. And for street trees, they'll be provided every 40 feet along all the streets and internal drives. Lighting meets both the UDO and staff policies. Lighting fixtures will be no more than 4,000 Kelvin in temperature, and they'll exhibit a warm light as well. Parking for apartment communities. There are two spaces required for every two-bedroom, and two-and-a-half spaces required for three-bedroom units, plus one space for every four bedrooms or units, however you want to say it. They're required to have 279, they're proposing 279 spaces as well. And of those spaces, that includes garage and off-street parking as well. Inspection department, together with the fire department, has reviewed and approved the plan as proposed. There are some minor wetlands indicated on this plan. Much of the area would not be affected by this plan, however, if any area that's affected by this plan or any disturbance, require the governing authority to provide documentation in town of Garner that that area can be disturbed. There are blue line streams on this parcel. Green Barre Park is a multi-filing development site located within the watershed protection area. This site is subject to stormwater quality requirements for nitrogen, 85% TSA removal, as well as water quantity requirements for the 1, 10, 25, or 100-year storm events. This plan will also provide a wet retention pond and underground sand filter treatment for the impervious surface, impervious surface area. This will satisfy the stormwater requirements for the 1, 10, 25, 1, 10, 25, or 100-year storm events. A nitrogen payment will also be required as a part of this development. This site will be served by the City of Raleigh's Public Water and Sewer. Grove Mountain Road will be watered and completed to the greatest extent possible, given the right-of-way constraints along adjacent properties. Plans do include to dedicate a left turn on the eastbound of Grove Mount into the project site. The pedestrian access will be accommodated with sidewalks along both sides of all the streets and private drives. Sidewalk will also be along the site's frontage on Timber Drive and Grove Mountain Road as well. Right-in and right-out access will be constructed along Timber Drive. Seminole Drive will be barricaded during construction and then connected, and homeland will be limited to bicycle and pedestrian connections. The staff has reviewed the plan and find that it's in agreement with the policies in the UDO, so long as the following site-specific specific, site-specific conditions, excuse me for being nervous, are met. Construction drawings will be submitted to the engineering department following site plan approval. Prior to issuance of building permit, staff shall be in receipt of the annexation petition for the annex portions of the site. Prior to issuance of building permit, engineering fees shall be paid to town of Garner. Prior to issuance of building permit, lots must be allotted record. The City of Raleigh fees shall be paid, and the town of Garner Engineering Department shall be in receipt of the nitrogen offset payment. It was my presentation, however, I'm here for questions, but the applicant's also here too as well, and I believe they have a presentation as well.
Okay, so while you're at the podium, I guess we'll see if there are questions, if that's okay with you.
Mr. Mayor, can we just confirm that the fair hearing and impartial decision-maker for this particular case, you have to ask those questions to council?
Thank you very much, Ms. Attorney, for the reminder. Put something in the place, I overlooked it. So, this is a quasi-judicial hearing, and we'll read the same instruction. Under state law, the parties are entitled to a fair hearing and an impartial decision-maker. And so, I will ask council members, do any of you have a fixed opinion prior to the hearing that is not subject to change, or have you had any ex parte communications? Do you have any close familial business or other association or relationship with an affected person or have a financial interest in the outcome? If so, you should answer at this time. Okay, Mr. Delinger?
I'm just acknowledging, over the course of this case, I've had multiple communications with either people in the neighborhood or people in the community related to the connectivity.
Okay, Ms. Attorney, I don't know if I need to, yeah, just confirm with Mr. Delinger that based on his comments, he can still make a fair and objective decision?
Yes.
Okay. Any other council members answering in regards to that? Okay. So, this is a fact-finding hearing, only competent material and substantial evidence that is not repetitive is allowed. Only expert witnesses based on training and experience may testify as to impacts on property values, traffic safety, or noise levels. Council members are only allowed to receive factual information during this hearing and are not allowed to discuss the case outside of the hearing. The town clerk has already sworn in, I believe, all the witnesses. Did anybody come in who expected to testify who has not been sworn? I think everybody was in the council chambers. So, okay, I believe I'm ready.
And again, for the record, the permit application and the staff report contained in the agenda packet are offered as evidence in this case to be accepted into the record unless an objection is raised by the applicant or a person withstanding.
Acceptance, do I need to ask the applicant about that?
They can raise their objection, if any, at the time that they make their presentation.
Was there a comment you wanted to make in regards to? Oh, okay. All right. Well, let's continue then with the presentation at this time. Was there anything else, Ms. Jones?
I'm done.
Okay, okay, all right. All right, all right, all right, sorry. Questions for Ms. Jones? I believe everybody had a chance to, okay. All right, if you will, please, sir, come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mayor Marshburn, members of the council. I'm Collier Marsh with Parker Poe at 301 Fayetteville Street here on behalf of the applicant. So, we have no objection and would appreciate the admission of the staff report and related materials into the evidence. And maybe I can... There you go. All right, I can do it on my own this time. So, members of council, this project has been around for a while, so we actually filed under the old version of the UDO, and so tonight, we're prepared to present competent material and substantial evidence to meet all of the criteria that are shown on the slide here. The council's familiar with the rezoning that was approved roughly a month ago, and I think that rezoning is indicative of the extensive efforts that our team has undertaken to ensure that each of the elements here are satisfied. So, tonight, we have three expert witnesses, or to be offered as expert witnesses, to address each of these criteria. We have Mr. John Callahan, licensed civil engineer, who will testify as to the project's compliance with the town's code and with the town's adopted plans. We have Craig Hyman, a licensed transportation engineer, who will talk about the traffic impacts of the property. And then finally, we have Hunter Howell, a licensed appraiser, who will talk about the impacts of this development on the surrounding area. And so, we have presented this rezoning and gone through a lot of the details in the past. We'll do our best to be as efficient as possible, and we'll get right to our first witness. So, at this time, I'd like to call Mr. John Callahan. And Mr. Callahan, if you could come up, and if you could please state your name, your address, and your experience for the council.
Sure. John Callahan, 333 Wade Avenue in Raleigh. I'm the owner and president of John Edwards &amp; Company, a civil engineering and land surveying firm, and I've got 25 years-plus experience in land development projects.
And can you describe your role in this project?
I am the engineer of record, and my firm has been doing the site planning and layouts to date with staff, and I've been overseeing that over the last two years.
At this time, I'd like to offer Mr. John Callahan as an expert in the fields of civil engineering and site design.
Question, show order.
So, John, we're looking at a slide that shows the site and the surrounding area. Can you just describe that site and its context for the council?
Sure. The site is approximately 18 acres, made up of five parcels there at the corner of Timber and Grove Mount. We've got frontage on Timber Drive and Grove Mount. Timber Drive is median divided. I think that's about it.
So, this slide shows the latest iteration of the site plan. Could you just go through the overall details of the project?
Sure. What we're showing here, there's 22 residential buildings with a total of 105 townhome-style apartment units. The UDO classifies these as apartments because they're for rent, but they will look and function as townhome vertically integrated units. The buildings range from three to six units, and for a total of 105, density is 5.9 units per acre. There will be a clubhouse pool, as well as an open field for active recreation space.
And is there an entity that will be responsible for the maintenance and operations of this?
Yes, there will be a management company similar to any apartment complex that takes care of the grounds and handles the rentals.
And do the site plans that you've prepared comply with the UDO requirements?
Yes, we have been working with staff over quite some time, several rounds of review, and we do believe that it is in compliance with the town code. Additionally, we've received rezoning approval just last month, as it was here before this council. And as part of that, we've already presented, we've got various conditions related to the maximum density, architectural standards, enhanced perimeter... maximum density, architectural standards, enhanced perimeter buffers, and the plan complies with all the proposed zoning conditions, and this use is allowed in this new zoning district. The the plan also complies with the Timber Drive overlay district and the parking ordinance, as Allison had stated, with 279 provided and required spaces.
All right, so switching to stormwater, could you just briefly summarize the stormwater controls that we're providing?
Absolutely. The topography of the site kind of dictates that the site be broken into two areas, the natural low point, kind of to the screen, north there. North and west is a there's a wetland feature and a draw that runs through there that will be just upstream of that feature, we're not actually impacting the stream feature, or the wetlands feature, excuse me, it's not a stream. But just above that will be constructed a stormwater wet pond. It will serve to treat both quantity and quality for the one, two, five, 25, and 100-year storm as required by the code. Then it also releases that water slowly to meet those pre-development runoff rates. On the site there to the, I guess it's Plan East, near Cindy Drive connection and the open recreational field, there is an underground detention chamber, and sand filter does much the same thing as the wet pond, but it's just underground in chambers.
All right, so we've now moved to a slide that shows the landscape plan on the right-hand side, and then a zoomed-in view of the amenity, the main amenity area and the open space, the playfield that we're providing. Could you just explain how this project provides buffering and meets open space requirements?
Yes, and we intentionally position the open space around the edges of the amenities and the property line between the residential neighborhood and this proposed development to create that space, and also to support the amenity areas with the club. And we have increased the buffers around on certain sides and added some fences along with the zoning conditions for the property.
All right, and now we have a slide that's highlighting some of the infrastructure-related improvements. So are public safety, transportation, and the utility facilities here adequate to serve the project?
Yes, and as previously discussed, we've worked with staff extensively, providing the connections as requested. The connection at Cindy Drive will be temporarily blocked during construction, but will be available for emergency services should that be required during the construction phase. The connection at Homeland was, in lieu of a vehicular connection, was limited to pedestrian only, and there will be utilities through those corridors as well. We've got access on Grove Mount Road and right-in, right-out access on Timber Drive.
There's one last slide for Mr. Callahan. Make sure I'm moving the right way. And so you were part of the rezoning effort, and as part of that effort, did you conclude that this project complies with the comprehensive plan and the applicable town planning policies?
Yes, as evidenced by the, the zoning was approved last month, was found consistent by staff and council, and this includes consistency with the future land use map, transportation plan, parks and recreations, greenways, and cultural resources master plan.
And I would like to move to also admit that rezoning consistency is a statement that was adopted by the town at the previous hearing. So those are all of my questions for Mr. Callahan. We're happy to have him available for questions now or at the close of evidence.
Okay, council, what's your pleasure while Mr. Callahan is here? Have questions for him, Phil?
No questions.
And at this time, thank you.
All right, well, next I would like to call Mr. Craig Hyman. And Craig, as you come up, if you could state your name, your address, and then your experience for the council.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, town council members. My name is Craig Hyman with Ramey Kemp Associates, 5808 Farrington Place in Raleigh. I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of North Carolina and have 20 years of traffic engineering experience.
And can you please describe your role in this project?
My firm was engaged to evaluate the impacts the traffic would have, that is generated by the proposed development on the adjacent roadway capacities and levels of service.
At this time, I'd like to offer Craig Hyman as an expert in the field of transportation engineering. So Craig, could you explain to the council how you evaluated the impacts on traffic of this proposed development?
We prepared something that's called a traffic assessment letter. This assessment was started early on in the rezoning process when the plan is contemplated at 121 townhome units compared to currently having 105 units. This assessment reviewed the existing roadway capacities for Grove Mount Road, Timber Drive, and Old Stage Road with the purpose of determining how the additional traffic generated by the proposed site would affect the existing roadway capacities. We had determined that all three roads would not, are not expected to exceed capacity once the proposed development is fully built out and operational.
And were any improvements recommended by your assessment?
No, they were not, but the study did factor in the exclusive left-turn lane into the site on Grove Mount Road eastbound, in addition to the right-in, right-out access on Timber Drive. Those improvements were included in the site plans that we used for the study. Based on the findings of the study, it was determined that the existing roadway structure, infrastructure is expected to be sufficient to accommodate the proposed development, due mostly in fact to the low number of low volumes that the proposed development are anticipated to generate.
And then have you explored any other transportation-related improvements?
Yes, the applicant informed my firm that discussions with the surrounding communities included a request from the neighbors to change the signal timing at the intersection of Grove Mount Road and Timber Drive for the left, the exclusive left-turn movement on Grove Mount Drive eastbound. In discussions with NC DOT, the plan is to spend time doing field optimization of the signal timings, once the development is fully built out and operational.
Okay, so in your professional opinion, will the proposed transportation facilities that are included with this project be able to serve this development while also maintaining adequate levels of service for the surrounding area?
Yes, I think so. The impacted streets will not exceed capacity, and the proposed improvements will mitigate the traffic expected to be generated by the proposed development.
Strictly from a transportation perspective, will this proposed development endanger public health or safety?
No, not in my opinion. The proposed access points and internal street network will be designed to meet the criteria of NC DOT and the Town of Garner, and will provide safe vehicular and pedestrian flow and efficient access for emergency services. The completion of Cindy Drive will increase connectivity and decrease the response times for emergency services.
And do the towns, do the proposed plans then conform with the town's transportation plans applicable to the site?
Yes, Timber Drive is shown as a four-lane divided highway, roadway, as it currently exists. A new two-lane driveway from the site onto Grove Mount Road is shown on the transportation plan, as well as widening of Grove Mount Road adjacent to the access driveway. The site plans include outlet, the outlet and the recommended dedication of land to allow for the widening of Grove Mount Road.
So those are all of my questions, and we're happy to have Mr. Hyman available for questions from the council.
Okay, thank you very much, council. What's your pleasure, as elects, to testimony for Mr. Hyman? And questions you have of him? None? Dellinger.
Some questions. Your assessment included Timber, Old Stage, and Grove Mount, correct?
Correct, yes.
Did your assessment include Winter, Lockton, and Greenbrier affected roads that lead into the adjoining neighborhood?
It did not.
Do you have no did no analysis on the impacts of traffic through that connectivity there?
Not in the internal network, no.
Do you have any measure or expectation of the velocity of traffic that would come through those roads based on your assessment?
Yes, in the AM peak hour, the development is proposed to generate 55 vehicles in the AM peak and 66 vehicles in the PM peak.
I meant velocity in the sense of speed traveled on the road.
We did not do a speed study, no.
So you don't know condition one, the proposed use will not endanger the public health and safety. So you can't comment from a traffic standpoint on whether the connectivity of this project will adversely impact the safety of the adjoining neighborhood.
I mean, I can't account for
I don't have a basis for that. Okay, thank you.
Vance, anything?
Questions?
Okay.
Mr. Hyman, is there anything about this specific project that indicates that people using this project would travel at unsafe speeds?
No, not in my opinion. With railways that are posted, you know, 25 or 35, depending on what, you know, the standards are, you know, in my experience that most people, you know, will observe the speed limits or, you know, slightly above, but I don't see any, you know, foresee any speeding or, you know, high-velocity traffic through the neighborhood.
I have a question related to that. When a neighborhood or a town adds traffic calming to a neighborhood, that's generally a result of what? If they add speed bumps, what is that generally? Why are they adding speed bumps to an old neighborhood?
To, I mean, to slow down traffic, but
Rare that multiple roads in the adjoining neighborhood have had speed bumps added because of excess speed and excess of the speed limit?
I have not, but I also haven't seen any speed studies based on that.
Okay, any other questions for this time? All right, I believe that's all for now.
I'd like to call our final witness, that's Mr. Hunter Howell. And so, Mr. Howell, could you please state your name, your address, and your experience for the council?
Yes, good evening, everyone. My name is Hunter Howell. My office address is 412 East Chadham Street, Cary, North Carolina, 27511. I'm a professional real estate appraiser, and I work for Valbridge Property Advisors. I am currently licensed by North Carolina as a state-certified general appraiser, and I'm a member of the Appraisal Institute, working towards a MAI designation. I have also been appraising properties throughout Wake County for approximately eight years.
And can you please explain your role in this project?
Yes. I was engaged by the applicant to examine this development's impact on the site and the surrounding area.
At this time, I would like to offer Mr. Howell as an expert in the field of real property appraisal and impacts to property. So, Mr. Howell, could you please explain how you evaluated the impacts of this proposed development?
Yes, I reviewed the site plan, rezoning approval, the land use pattern of the surrounding area, and how this type of development typically impacts surrounding properties. This site is situated in a largely residential area with a Greenbrier neighborhood directly west and north. The residential uses are also located to the south across Grove Mount Road. Garner High School is located to the east, along with a larger shopping center north of the high school, and although these uses to the east are separated from the site by Timber Drive.
So is this proposed use compatible with those adjacent uses and those neighborhoods in the immediate area in terms of building scale, site design, buffering and screening, and operating characteristics?
Yes. The proposed townhome use is consistent with the residential areas surrounding the site. While the area is primarily made up of single-family detached homes, the townhome use is compatible with the character of the area. The scale of the proposed development creates a gradual increase in density as one approaches Timber Drive and the Grove Mount intersection, and the non-residential uses to the east. It is also a common practice to concentrate densities at intersections. This reduces vehicle miles for more people because of the easier access to the transportations.
Onto the next slide, just to give some more context here. So these are illustrations or renderings of the site. Do you expect any significant adverse impacts from this proposed use?
No, the proposed use is compatible with the surrounding residential area. However, a key component of integrating various residential types is the use of appropriate transitions and buffers. Larger buffers are required for large increases in density. Here, because the proposed development is only about six units per acre, the scale of the proposed townhomes is not a major increase in intensity. The maximum 25-foot buffers will sufficiently buffer these existing neighborhoods and mitigate any potential impacts. The proposed development also utilizes open space and amenity areas to create significant larger buffers and transitions. The plan also incorporates a privacy fence in the areas to supplement the buffers.
Turning right to one of the elements, in your professional opinion, does this, would this proposed development substantially injure the value of adjoining properties?
No. As I mentioned, the proposed use is compatible with the surrounding area, and the buffers use, and the use of the buffers will mitigate any potential impacts from these townhomes.
Those are all of my questions for Mr. Howell, if the council has any for Mr. Howell.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll start with Mr. Vance on my right. Any questions for Mr. Howell?
Questions?
Dellinger.
Curiosity question, in your professional opinion and experience, have you seen a different, any difference between the use of this housing structure as rental versus owner-occupied and adjoining properties? Or is this a relatively new phenomenon we're seeing? How many data points are there?
It's relatively new, but there are starting to be a lot more data points. We have appraised some of these in the past, and there has not been a significant or any real major differences between this and just a regular one that someone might own personally. So in that case, you know, there's not a really major difference.
Relatively new.
They're still relatively new, but we are seeing it across the triangle in general a lot more.
Anything, Mr. Singleton? Matthews? Okay, I believe that's all.
So just to wrap up, I'd like to quickly summarize how we've presented competent material and substantial evidence to support each of the required findings. First, the proposed use will not endanger the public health or safety. Staff started by presenting and confirming that the town's own engineers and fire department have reviewed these plans to ensure that they comply, and that the town's own staff does not have concerns about this project's impact on public health and safety. We followed up with our witnesses, Mr. Callahan, talking about how everything is designed and compliance with the code, and he has no concerns that this does not endanger public health or safety. Similarly, that was Mr. Hyman's expert opinion, that the transportation facilities do not injure, do not endanger the public health or safety. Now, I appreciate concerns about the street stub connections and the fact that there may be existing folks that could drive too fast in certain areas and neighborhoods to the west, but there's nothing inherent about this project that makes it unsafe. We can't control what drivers already do, but the project itself and the question presented to the council as to whether this proposed plan substantially endangers the public health or safety is definitively answered with the expert testimony that it does not. The proposed use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining property. That was the last question that Mr. Howell answered confidently. Although these are relatively new, there's ample data in the market to ensure that these have similar impacts to for-sale units, and not to be lost in all of the equation is all of the elements that go along with this project. This is not a run-of-the-mill townhome or apartment project. This project has substantial commitments, architectural commitments, open space commitments, playfields, pool, traffic calming devices, added plantings, any number of things to ensure that this ensure that this is a high-quality, well-maintained property and that commitment to maintain will be done by that Property Management Association. If completed as proposed, the development will require, will comply with all requirements of the ordinance, unanimous from the town and our expert witnesses that this will comply with all aspects of the ordinance. Also, unanimous from the town and our witnesses, element number five that were consistent with adopted plans, sorry, number four, number five, compatible with the adjacent uses, that was also covered by Mr. Howell and his expert opinion that this is compatible. And again, I direct the council back to all of those buffers. Now, these are just relatively small, low-height townhome units, yet there are substantial buffers, buffers that may be appropriate for something far more intense than this. And so, we've done, we've gone above and beyond to ensure that compatibility. So, any significant adverse impacts resulting from the site will be mitigated or offset. Now, although there aren't really any significant adverse impacts that were identified, we've done extensive work to ensure that the impacts of this development are effectively mitigated through the traffic calming circle, through the extensive measures we've taken with those street stub connections, but I think importantly, looking at stormwater, committing to enhance stormwater devices, and as folks may recall in the rezoning, putting those stormwater control measures exactly where neighbors thought they were appropriate and needed to be. Public safety, transportation, utility facilities are all available. That was covered by staff and confirmed by John Callahan that those are all available, and then adequate assurances of continuing maintenance have been provided, and that's through the property management. So, we presented competent material and substantial evidence as to each of these factors, so we respectfully request that this council vote to adopt or to approve our special use permit. Again, happy to answer any other questions.
Okay, thank you, sir. Counsel, any further questions to this witness? Anybody?
Questions?
Thanks, sir. I believe that's all for now. Sure enough, at this point in time, you had no other witnesses, right, sir? Okay. Are there members of the public who are here this evening to desire to speak on this matter? Okay, if you will go to the podium and state your name and address, please.
Can you confirm that they've been sworn in?
I need to confirm that you were sworn in earlier, is that right?
Thank you. Jennifer McLaughlin, 4415 Parkwood Drive. I am the Greenbrier HOA president currently. I'm here just to speak on behalf of the board this evening. We appreciate all of the work that you all have done, that the developers have done to make this a wonderful option for this parcel of land. We do understand that the connectivity in the stub of Cindy has been in place since the road was initially developed. However, at that point in time, it was roughly, you know, half acre for each property, so it would have been roughly 32 additional houses on that property added to the neighborhood, and there remains concern for our safety in terms of traffic in that area. And I come here tonight just asking on behalf of our neighborhood that if this special use permit is approved, that the town would work with us as a neighborhood to figure out traffic calming throughout the rest of the neighborhood. We already have some on Vesta and Winter Locken as it stands. That will no longer be enough, and, you know, there will be more thorough traffic on Winter Locken and Greenbrier as this neighborhood brings additional homes and drivers into this. And our ask is simply that you would work with us on more traffic calming measures throughout the neighborhood because it is dangerous. There are people that go 50 miles an hour through our neighborhood. We even had a close call on Halloween, and I think we saw on the news that this is happening more and more. People are driving recklessly through neighborhoods, and it's inevitable that this will be coming as part of this. So, we would just ask that as part of approving, if you move forward with approving this special use permit tonight, that we have a commitment from the Town of Garner to work with us on further traffic calming in this area. Thank you.
Address, please, sir.
Joe McCormick, 4912 Cindy Drive. Sure you guys are pretty tired of hearing from me, but just wanted to speak my piece for this last vote. Definitely have a lot of concerns still on the Cindy Drive connection. It concerns me that we've been sort of moving forward with this process without actually addressing that issue. I've heard a lot of concerns from members of council and the desire to come to a solution here, but no real effort to actually find one before we keep moving forward with the project here. Anyone that thinks that 105, two-to-three-bedroom units worth of traffic is going to make a left onto Grove Mount and onto Timber when you can go down Cindy and through the neighborhood without hitting a single stop sign, that's kind of crazy. And I appreciate the questions by Mr. Dallinger here about what is the impact from the surrounding communities as well, because while in a vacuum, a development like this may not put much additional load on the infrastructure in our area, having that connection that goes straight through our neighborhood is going to be a very tempting route for a lot of commuters in the area, especially given how congested 70 and Timber gets during peak hours of commute. I also have concerns, I believe that on the plan, I still saw 4913 Cindy as being highlighted as part of the area. We were told that that is part of our neighborhood, which is designated a historic neighborhood, should not be removed for the project, and it's sort of been neglected over the last year. It looks like the roof's about to fall in. So, just have some concerns about how the property owner that is owning that property and this new development is going to be treating their property based on the condition of a historic home that is already in their portfolio there. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Just an update about streets, street connectivity. Public Works Committee, which is Councilman Vance and myself, had met with staff. We had a two-hour meeting, and then in our meeting last couple of weeks ago, information was brought to the whole council. We talked about stubs, street connectivity. This was the prime topic we talked about for over two hours, laws, state laws, fire codes, so forth and so on. So, we have looked at all kinds of different options to avoid the Cindy Drive connection, and our attorney has given us a valid legal opinion of what can and cannot be done, and we do have an option. And I reckon we'll discuss that. It's elephant, elephant in the room is that's a one-way street. Let's make Cindy Drive a one-way street. It just goes out. The people from the new neighborhood can't come in, it just goes out. So, that will help keep that traffic going through Greenbrier neighborhood. That's an option that we have to decide. Now, councilman decided not to do that. Can't cut the road off, we can't block it, can't put a gate there permanently. There's a lot of things that can't be done, also because of Raleigh Utilities Policies. So, that's an option that we have before us to discuss is we can make it a one-way street eastbound.
Okay, were there others who desired to speak at this public hearing? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Dallinger.
This project has been in the works since at least last summer, and the concerns of the community additive in our meetings, and I'm sure staff has heard them, I guess my question is, and the expert that testified, testified that he had not done any independent verification of traffic numbers or speed in the Greenbrier neighborhood. Has our staff ever done traffic speed study inside of Greenbrier in the year and a half that this project has been on our radar with the concerns of the citizens?
Not that I know of. I don't... Yo, okay, you want to answer that? Okay.
What do you think? Leah Harrison with Engineering. We have not done anything. We do have a formal traffic calming policy, which we have used recently in neighborhoods like Hunter's Mark when we installed the traffic calming there. It requires a request for that study to be done by the neighborhood. There is a formal process for that. So, that's, you know, definitely something that I'd be happy to work with the HOA on how to submit that and get that done because we can do a traffic study as needed to see what kind of traffic calming would be warranted. Generally, I've never seen a case where we've just done that without that being submitted as a formal request in that way because of development, but...
In, that's not part of the hearing, in the future, for staff in the community to work better together and be more proactive about that would be helpful to our developers and our neighborhoods. My only concern really right now is that, number one, they will not endanger public health or safety, and then there are actions that we can discuss, I think, later, or want to do, but still, there's not been a... Still not. There's may not, I don't think, but no expert testimony that there will not be public health or...
Okay, and I would just observe, Mr. Dallinger, you know, I think that, I would call it the policy we put together for traffic calming was designed, I think, to give that some structure and consistency across different neighborhoods, and as our engineer pointed out, says for requesting that, and I think the town's been very responsive when it has been requested, and I would certainly expect that our town would continue to work with the neighborhood around those issues. They exist places, and I know we've answered the cones. Okay, was there anybody, did you wish to do a follow-up?
I'd just like to make a few final comments and also recall one of our witnesses to address some of the information we've heard, but as an initial matter, I'd like to make sure that it's clear to the council that testimony of lay witnesses does not carry the same weight as testimony of experts. They're not qualified to offer opinions on impacts to traffic, and that can't be considered as such. There's a comment about the one home, single-family home in the historic section of the neighborhood and what's going to happen to that. Well, our conditions commit to preserving that and ensuring that it would be kept as a single-family home, and so upon development of this project, that's going to be rehabbed and sold. So, that was a commitment of this rezoning. Now, hearing comments on the proposed use will not endanger the public health or safety, I would like to call Mr. Craig Hyman again and just touch on that a bit more because I think there's more information that's worth considering here. So, Craig, if you don't mind coming up, first of all, is it correct that this project did not perform and submit a traffic impact analysis because the number of trips generated by this project were too low to trigger that analysis?
That is correct. The trigger points for NC DOT and for the Town of Garner have not been met to do a full traffic impact analysis.
And so, one was not required, but this team went above and beyond and performed our own traffic assessment to take a forward-looking approach to that. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. You know, we did our due diligence, and we feel that our assessment is, you know, valid and true.
And when you looked at the streets that we needed to evaluate for traffic impacts, did you look at the streets that were likely to have the most traffic, most trips from our project?
Yes, we determined the percentages of where the trips would be coming from, and their majority are from external roadways, so that's why we studied the external roadways.
And so, when you compare the number of trips using Grove Mount and Timber as to the internal streets of the Greenbrier neighborhood, is it correct that the number of trips using those external, again Grove Mount and Timber, are many more or vastly more than the internal streets?
Yes, it's a significant number of vehicles using the external versus the internal streets.
And so, did you conclude that there is minimal impact on those internal streets from this development?
Yes, I would just think it's fair to say that, yes.
And is it correct that this project includes traffic calming devices at the intersection of Cindy Drive?
Yes, it does, as shown with the traffic circle.
And is it correct that we removed a connection to Homeland Drive?
That is correct.
So, those are all my questions for Mr. Hyman. I'd just like to, again, focus in on the proposed use will not endanger the public health or safety. The Cindy Drive connection is a requirement of the town's own code, and so this team has done everything possible under the town's code on our project to ensure that this project does not endanger the public health or safety. There's no testimony of anything else that can be done. So, again, I think we've more than met our burden on that element.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Matthews, I recognize you for...
Thanks, sir. I've listened to this all night. I feel like I'm in a courtroom here. But, having said that, the term I like to use a lot is called common sense. I think the town staff said they would work with HOA to put traffic calming devices in there, and I sensed that was a good connection there. Everyhow, that needs to be done to alleviate some of the speeding, potential speeders up on some of the Greenbrier existing roads, which would calm the traffic down above and beyond this development here. So, we can do two things at once, is what I'm hearing here, and if the town will agreement to do that, I'm okay with moving forward. Now, we can debate this all night, but I think the safety issues have been addressed, and as long as we do what we're supposed to do and work with them, I think we can come out all right here. That's just, that was my two cents worth, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, yeah, before we, well, I recognize the town manager.
I just want to make one clarification. I think we committed to applying the policy and studying it, and that could result in traffic calming devices, but I don't think we definitively said we would put traffic calming devices there. I think we're going to use the policy and see what that turns up and study the speed.
All I'm going by is what I heard from our department here that they would work with the neighborhoods, and that's what I heard.
I just want to make sure it wasn't absolute promise that we were going to put speed bumps out there. We're going to apply the policy.
Right, Mr. Manager is correct. So, our policy has pretty clear criteria, and I think that was out of a desire, like Mr. Mayor stated, to have some clarification and some uniform application of that. So, it's basically a combination of speeds that are studied and quantity of traffic, just the number of cars going through. So, there's a process laid out, but basically, you know, a neighborhood or residents can submit an application to us, a request for a traffic calming study. We put out the counters that measure the speed and the number of cars, and there are specific thresholds to be met that warrant different types of traffic calming, and then we look at feasibility of what can be done and decide what the best type of traffic calming is. So, yes, I would say that's correct. We wouldn't necessarily commit to installing something specific, but we will definitely commit to working with them to get the study performed and follow-up from there.
Thank you, that's what I was looking, okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Remember that Greenbrier was the guinea pig for our traffic calming policy to begin with.
Yes, it was.
15 or 20 years ago, Mr. Richardson remembers, Mr. Jenkins, Mr. Hazel, then Mr. Richardson had us out of his house one morning eating biscuits and coffee, counting cars going by. Really, that's true. So, just telling a true story. So, we know the cut-through traffic, I mean, they're in the Garner Bermuda Triangle, 401 on one side, 70 on the other, and Timber on the other. So, there's cut-through traffic. So, and I appreciate the engineer talking about where they would mainly go and may or may not cut through the neighborhood, but people take cut-throughs all the time. Anyway, there's an opportunity and option to help the situation by making Cindy Drive one-way eastbound, and that will help along with additional, using the traffic calming policy for additional streets in Greenbrier. You can't connect to a subdivision that was built 55 to 60 years ago with a new development and expect everything to be butterflies and buttercups. It's just not going to work that way. So, we're trying, the developers, the developers done a wonderful job on cutting back the units, putting buffers in, making their play area extensive, that things that back up to the neighborhood done a wonderful job, and we mentioned that before. It's just the one connection to Cindy is the concern that the residents still have, and we need to address that.
Okay, I think I've heard from everyone, we've been pretty patient to give you all an opportunity to speak, so I think it's appropriate at this time to close the public hearing, and council can discuss it, want to, but we'll hear from you. So, I'm going to officially close the public hearing, and before I call for the motion, if you desire to make any other points that you care to, you can do that at this time, and then we will ask for a motion. Ms. Barron, I recognize you.
I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into developing this site plan, and I appreciate the residents of Greenbrier and their cooperation and their input. I've said this before in council meetings, I will say it again and again and again, numbers don't mean anything if it's you or your kid. So, let's keep in mind that we're dealing with people, not just numbers, and we want to work to make this project work, but we don't want to endanger anyone. And we want to work to make this project work, but we don't want to endanger anyone. And that means that we need to consider all the options and find the solution that works. But we don't need to dismiss it because numbers don't show.
Okay, anybody else on council? All right.
I do have a question for the attorney, I reckon. I mean, there's a motion here to approve and one not to approve. But if we want to direct the Cindy Drive issue, or, I mean, that's not included in the permit, how do we direct that to happen? If we don't make Cindy Drive a one-way street eastbound?
This is a quasi-judicial proceeding on a special use permit, so you can add conditions to the project, to the approval. As long as they address one of those eight factors.
So right above, under staff's recommendation, there are six specific conditions to the, to the proposal. So we can add a seventh, or we can discuss how to add a seventh. Is that correct, Ms. Jones?
Yes, you can add another condition.
I proposed, we had a seventh condition that Cindy Drive be made a one-way street that would be eastbound, meaning the traffic from Greenbrier would flow through it, and the traffic from the new proposed development cannot flow back through Greenbrier. We do know emergency vehicles can go on one-way streets, whatever the quickest and fastest way is. And that's noted in Ms. Jones's letter that she sent to us last week, her illegal opinion.
Okay, so I believe, thank you, Ms. Singleton. So you've noted that, and that if the council wants to incorporate that, that would be a condition, added condition as part of the motion, I believe. So are you ready for a motion, council? We've had considerable debate on the matter.
There's a quick question around, you know, if that's the direction of the one-way, then the cut-through traffic would be isolated primarily to Winterlocken to cut through to this neighborhood. And I guess my question, is there any latitude we have on, how can we accelerate the traffic calming on that road as part of this process? Because there's only, if we do the one-way, then they're coming down, and that's the way they're going to go. And so being a condition or requirement of the developer, I don't know that that's what we could do. But I don't, I'm not sure occurrences we can give that we will do something on there. Because there will be more traffic, and it's going to be faster. And they're not sworn, but they can say, I feel endangered when I walk down the street. Doesn't require expert sworn testimony to testify to that. So is there anything in the conditions that can be put on this, or is that something we- outside of this hearing?
If I understand you correctly, to require this applicant or developer to do the traffic calming on the existing streets in Greenbrier would be considered an off-site traffic improvement, and therefore it has to have a rational nexus and be reasonable. I don't know whether the developer would agree to that or not, but it would be beyond what is, what would be generally required of a developer of a raw tract of land like this. Considering that there's been a recognition that some of the traffic issues are pre-existing to this new development, certainly it can be studied, but, you know, it would be questionable as to whether the developer would agree to do additional off-site improvements that are potentially unknown at this time.
Ms. Jones, would it be appropriate, we have on occasion, not recently, taken a brief recess from a meeting and given the attorney- briefly on that and bring some information back to us. Is possibly could be done if that's, I guess, a crucial part of the approval here?
Certainly, if you wanted to take your recess a little bit early and do that at this time in the middle of this deliberation, you can do that.
Mr. Mayor, if I want to make a comment. I think the one-way street is going to eliminate anything going into their neighborhood. And we've already worked out that a potential of traffic study can be worked with the HOA to find out specifically where these traffic calming devices would need to be because it's not known at this point. And we're such a long ways out. I think if, just speaking of me, I'm prepared to vote on with the additional condition that Mr. Singleton has brought forth to add to that, make that a one-way street eliminates the new place, new traffic going into Greenbrier. And that would eliminate a good portion of the concerns there. Then we do that study or as needed to find those traffic calming devices where they're needed, once this thing is developed. And it ain't going to go away. We just got to, let's do it right.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Matthews. I mean, I'm ready first to go ahead and move-
I'm prepared to make a motion, and we can debate it.
More time to clarify that, I'm willing to do that. But if council is ready for a motion, that would be in order as well, I believe.
A question here, is there a point that clarification needs to be made in reference to the connectivity that we just discussed before making a motion? Or are we making a motion based upon what we have in SUP?
Well, I added the condition, the condition was added that it would be a one-way street eastbound. I think what Mr. Dallinger was bringing up is that people driving through, coming in from another way would still drive through Winterlocken to Camilla and get to Cindy, and there may be some additional traffic that way. But I do believe that, I know the Greenbrier residents know they can apply for the policy, and we can go that way. So I think maybe that's a, the way to look at it.
Okay, so we're looking, clarification from me, so we're looking at two separate issues?
No, we, I added condition seven, and we'll see if it's included in the motion. And then I think the Greenbrier residents will file the necessary paperwork. They give me the thumbs up out there. They'll file the paperwork to start the traffic calming device process.
I'm with you.
Good on that, Mr. Vance.
Good on that.
The motion will include the one-way street.
Yeah.
I believe the issue is ripe for a motion at this point. I think I closed the public hearing formally. So council, if that's, if you're ready, you have the issue before you, consider motion to approve or deny special use permits. Pretty straightforward.
Mr. Mayor, I, regarding SUP SP-21-09 Greenbrier Park Apartments. I found the application SUP SP-21-09 meets the town's eight criteria for special use permits as identified in Article 3.92 Delta. Therefore, I move that the town council approve SUP 21-09 Greenbrier Parts with seven site-specific versus six, which will be making Cindy Drive one-way. As will be listed on permit, that will be prepared by the staff.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Matthews. The motion is made and seconded by Mr. Vance. Before we vote, any other last-minute observations, otherwise we'll call for questions. Okay, council, you've heard the motion. If you favor the motion, I will ask you to vote aye. Aye?
Aye.
If there's opposition to the motion, vote no. Okay, the motion passes, and it is so ordered. I'm not going to make any lengthy speeches other than to say it's been, I think, a thoroughly vetted process. And I appreciate the involvement of all involved, both the developer and applicant, and certainly the good neighbors over in Greenbrier. We've worked with them over the years in a lot of different ways. And I believe ultimately, this will, this will work to be a positive thing, both for the area and for the town in general. So commend you, council, for sticking with the process and seeing it all the way through, so.
I have one comment, just I want to be, I express appreciation to the developer. You've all been at this a long time. You've made a lot of changes along the way, listening to the community, listening to council. And it's going to be a better project for it. So we're appreciative of you listening to our feedback and the community, and good luck.
Okay, concludes that particular hearing. Thank you for your patience. I'm going to suggest we take a ten-minute recess, maybe, and come back around nine o'clock. And we'll pick up with items under new and old business, I believe. So, ten-minute recess.
We've completed the public hearings and we're now under new and old business. We'll go ahead and take item one and then we will, by the amendment, switch two and three. So I'll call item one, Mr. Reginald Bowie, recognize you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to present US 70 East Industrials, a Tier One Conditional rezoning, case number CZ 2204. The applicant is Justin Parker, Al Nayar LLC. Property is owned by L. &amp; L. Company LLC, is located at 4839 Green Garden Road. The tract size is 32.75 acres and includes half of future 540 right-of-way. Is a Tier One request with written conditions only. The request is to rezone the 32.75 acres from single-family residential R-40 to heavy industrial I-2C 257 conditional. The site is located on the north side of US Highway 70 East and adjacent to the eastern margin of future NC 540 corridor and may be further identified as a portion of Wake County PIN number 1730842632. Conditions have been proposed to limit the range of permissible uses down to 17 out of a possible 60 in the heavy industrial I-2 district. Here you see an aerial photo of the site, highlighted in orange. Basically, we have the adjacent zoning and land use. Proposed I-2C 257 conditions, I'm sorry, uses. Overlay notes, LHO, none of the prohibited LHO district uses are included in the proposed use provided above. Some of the uses proposed will overlap with those identified for the LHO as restricted. CHO, none of the restricted CHO overlay district uses are included in the proposal. Town staff notes that the outdoor-only component of storage, specific uses prohibited by the CHO as a standalone primary use. Additionally, accessory outdoor storage of items not sold or used on-site are prohibited. Indoor-only storage and outdoor storage of goods sold or used on-site are permitted. Town council conducted a public hearing on October 3rd and staff presented the request. There were no questions or comments and the case was referred to the planning commission. Consistency of the request, PC meeting, relevant land use plan analysis. This proposal is consistent with the 2018 Garner Ford Plan. The proposed 225,000 square foot flex building is a recommended use by the LIC Light Industrial Center. The passing included in the rezoning is subject to Highway 540, therefore overlay district outlined in section 4.11 of the Garner UDO. You have a map showing the consistency of the request. You see some of the other uses of zoning districts around. Planning Commission conducted a meeting on October 10th of this year. We presented the case and gave an overview of the zoning map amendment request. And on the vote of 7-0, the Planning Commission moved to accept staff's consistency statement and recommend approval to town council. Here we have the consistency statement. The Planning Commission found that the request to rezone the 32.75 acres from rural agricultural to heavy industrial I-2C 257 conditional, heavy industrial HRC 257 conditional for development of industrial flex space for identified uses is consistent with the future land use maps designation of Light Industrial Center, which supports small to medium scale on-site manufacturing and production uses located near both a major highway and a rail corridor. And you have the reasonable statement, reasonableness. Staff recommendation, in addition to findings of plan consistency, staff would also note the following in support of a motion to approve CZ 2204 as presented. Number one, the site is bordered by the North Carolina Railroad Corridor and North Carolina 540 corridor on both sides and surrounded by other industrial zoning on the remaining sides. Number two, the proposed use is not out of the character of the area given the existing development patterns along US 70 Highway East. Here we have a set of recommended motions. Please refer to this worksheet on 104 of your packet for a motion to approve or deny CZ 2204 US 70 East Industrial. And staff's recommendation is highlighted in green. Are there any questions for me at this time?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bowie, for your presentation. Ms. Barrett, I'll start with you if you have any questions for Mr. Bowie.
No questions.
Okay, Mr. Singleton?
Sure.
Challenger?
A quick question. What is the estimated real property tax revenue to the town based on the expected build-out?
I'm unprepared. Can't research it and get information, but I'm unprepared to answer that question at this time.
Other question that I would like answered at some point, is it expected to be revenue positive for the town?
I will look into both of those questions.
Bowie, Mr. Vance?
Questions at this side?
This side? Let me see, Mr. Bowie, I believe your presentation is the only one to be conducted on this matter?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, council, any discussion amongst yourselves relating to the proposed motion? Hearing none, I believe a motion is in order at this time. You have the motion sheet there before you.
Mr. Mayor, I move town council accepts the planning commission's written statement regarding consistency of the zoning amendment requests with adopted land use plans detailed in section five of the staff report as their own. I further move that town council adopt ordinance number 2022 approved zoning CZ 22-04 as request is reasonable in public interest because it encourages redevelopment and reuse of existing sites and buildings that are complementary to the surrounding area.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. The motion is before the council, is there a second? Okay, properly seconded by Councilmember Behringen. All right, you ready to vote, council? So if you favor the motion presented by Mr. Matthews, seconded by Ms. Behringen, would you vote aye?
Aye.
If there's opposition, would you vote no? Okay, there is none. The motion is passed and the ordinance 2022-5152 is adopted. Thank you very much. Mr. Bowie, let me see, are you on the, let's see, so we will now go to item three, I believe, under new and old business.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. This is second item for you tonight, coming back for a possible decision. Spring Drive Town Homes, CZ MP 2211. Again, we'll just kind of highlight briefly some of the information as this has been presented to you before. The applicant is Charlie Townsend, professional engineer with VHB. The owner at the time of submittal was Springfield Development Corporation. The property is now owned by Tri-Land Corporation. The request is to rezone a little over 11 acres from what was office institutional conditional, now neighborhood mixed use conditional, to the old multifamily category one, which would now be adopted if approved as multifamily A. So this would be for the development of a town home community not to exceed four and a half dwelling units per acre. We do have zoning conditions that we went over before, that includes architectural and amenities. Reminder of the location here to the south of Garner High School. Reminder of the current zoning map. Spend time going through all of these conditions individually, they are the same as proposed before. In terms of the master plan, we are looking at a 50-unit cap. The minimum width of these units would be 18 feet, and you see the setbacks there. And again, just a reminder of the master plan. We do have the residential thoroughfare over here, which will preserve 25 feet of vegetation drive, except where the street is punched through. We do potentially have a dumpster here for community service. We have a sand filter underneath the parking lot, taking care of stormwater on the eastern end of the site. We have a stormwater pond over here on the western side. Here again, you see the school property bisecting the site, and so there will be gates that continue to allow the school access, should they need it, into the back end of their property. We have a community area here centrally located, and I will point out the dog park over here. I'll come back to that with some additional commentary in a moment. So at the public hearing, some of the issues that were discussed were traffic calming specifics, both planned and possible. Anything vertical, subject to engineering and fire spec standards and approval. Tree canopy clarifications were asked about along Timber Drive. We did highlight changes from the previous submittal from about a year ago, or not quite a year ago. And then also talked about buffers, fencing, and tree removal, particularly along the southern boundary. And then the matter was referred to the planning commission. The planning commission, when looking at the consistency of the plan, did note that the request would be inconsistent with the designation as it exists today, that it is not consistent with the multifamily residential, which would call for apartments and condos. But then we as staff did notice, did note that town home style buildings are generally accepted as an appropriate transitional use between single-family and higher intensity uses due to their smaller massing and scale. And again, just a reminder there of this multifamily residential future land use, which mimics that along the eastern margin of the school as well. In terms of transportation plan, we noted that Timber Drive is identified as a four-lane divided roadway and is built out. Transportation plans also call for sidewalks along both Timber and Spring Drive, which again, already existing, and the project will connect to both of those. So therefore, the commission found it consistent with the transportation plan. They also found it consistent with the parks' master plan. The site is not designated in a parkland search area. Timber Drive, though, is a Greenway corridor. We believe that the Greenway corridor eventually will actually be on the opposite side due to White Deer Park in the south Garner Greenway being on that side of the road as well. So the planning commission during their debates, one of the things that they did talk about was the dog park. There were sentiments in favor and both maybe not so much in favor. I think the concern there was the location of it being somewhat detached from the neighborhood. I think some folks saw that potentially as a disadvantage, while others thought that maybe the dog park's location might be an amenity actually then for the larger community. Didn't really walk away from that with a preference for one or the other. So if you as council have any input on that, we'll certainly take that into account. Both a dog park and just leaving it as tree conservation would both count towards open space. So either way, it would satisfy the ordinance requirements. The commission also talked about garage sizes and driveway lengths, just to make sure that those things were in order. They did spend some time discussing traffic calming, as well as pedestrian movements throughout the site. Tree canopy between the fields and the town homes was discussed, and then the fence height as well. At the end of the meeting, though, on a vote of seven to zero, the planning commission did move to accept the consistency statement as their own that they provide to you and recommended approval to the town council. So that consistency statement was that the planning commission finds that while this request to rezone 11.08 acres from office institutional conditional to multifamily residential conditional is consistent with many of Garner's land use related plans, it is inconsistent with future land use maps designation of multifamily residential, which calls for multi-story and higher density condos and apartment developments. So if approved, uh, a future land use, uh, map amendment would need to be made and has been incorporated into, uh, the adoption ordinance, uh, should you decide to go that route. And we are, discuss reasonableness. Uh, so our staff recommendation, in addition to the findings about plan consistency, we would note the following, uh, additional items in support of a motion to approve. Uh, the proposed MFA district and town homes are more similar in character height than massing with the townhouse style and two-story apartments located to the east. And fee simple townhomes would be a less intense use next to the Woodlands single-family subdivision on Buckhorn Road than garden-style apartments, thus providing a massing and scale appropriate transitional use between the neighborhood and the high school. Uh, so on page 159 of your packet, we do have, um, your motion worksheet with both, uh, highlighting for approval and, uh, or denial as you find fit. And that is all that I have. The applicant is here as well tonight. Um, in case you have any questions of them, they can also clarify, um, anything that changed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Treesenberg. So, council, um, questions for Mr. Treesenberg at this time? Mr. Vance, anything?
No questions at this time.
Okay, Mr. Challenger? Mr.?
This plan, we see, uh, Mr. Treesenberg, there's two, it says potential flat top speed bump location on the west and the east side of this. Now, does potential mean there's going to be one in the area, or is potential mean there's going to not be one? I just don't know exactly where it may be located, but they're for traffic calming purposes.
Right, so they did take a preliminary look at just per engineering specs and standards, um, where they thought one might be permitted. Um, engineering would have to take a look at those locations further. Um, but they do believe that there are potentially a couple of side, that could be. Um, but I would defer to Leah, to, um, the town engineer, to answer specific questions if you have them.
And another question, the movement from Spring Drive will be the free-flow movement. Where Spring Drive currently tees into that, which is a free-flow movement now, the, I'm assuming we're going to put a stop bar and a stop sign, right? I mean, it can't be, we can't have the free flow, two free-flow movements coming into one another.
Um, I'm trying to remember. Do you recall where the stop sign? Yeah, there, there is on one of the three approaches. I forget which one right offhand.
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, the school's been there for 50 years, and that's always been a free-flow movement, even though it's been, it used not to be exactly like this when I was in school. But, I mean, if the, if the movement into Spring Drive is, don't slow down, you can't have something that don't slow down coming the other way, or we're going to have much, we're going to have collisions, especially with high school kids driving. I'm just saying, where your dot is, are we not going to condition a stop bar there and a stop sign? And since it's been that way for over 50 years, do we not need to have a stop sign that's with one of the solar panels that flashes and gets people's attention? Because I'm afraid we're going to have accidents right there because the movement has been free-flowing for over 50 years.
If I recall correctly, Mr. Johnson, the previous town engineer, his recommendation was to put one here, um, on the southbound movement.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, well, and are they responsible for that, or are we responsible for that?
Um, I think that would be, that would be part of their traffic improvements.
Okay. I'll just, I'll just really urge us to put one of those with, with the solar panel and the sign flashes to get people's attention, because they're not going to be used to this when it happens. I'm just saying, if we need to add a condition, we, if that's possible, we'll talk about it then. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Behringler, if you have a chance? Nothing? Um, so, did the applicant want to, uh, make any other comments, uh?
We're here to answer any questions about our proposed project and provide any clarification as necessary.
All right. Applicant is available. Questions for this gentleman?
You're willing to make sure we get a stop sign there, the stop bar and a stop sign with flashing signal, so, uh, it will get people's attention that that's a stop, that will be a stop once this project is complete.
Yeah, we are committed to making a stop condition, but we would have to work with engineering on what's the most appropriate stop condition in that location.
Well, can we condition it so we have a flashing stop sign? I'm just, I'm just saying, I, I know when that we put in, I mean, I drive back, backwards all the time with my work, and they're making a lot of four-ways, and they got those flashing signs. I'm just thinking of something that's been a free movement for all these years.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see why not. Um, I don't know of any other location where we've installed the.
I'm just thinking that, who's going to school and who's driving cars? 16, 17, 18-year-olds. Okay, thank you. Just want to make sure that that's something that's done with that project.
Questions down here? Questions up there? You okay?
An additional point of clarification, if, we were just talking about, I think this is DOT maintained at this point in time, so they would have to weigh in as well. But just, if we wanted to, I think, make that condition, we could. We would just need to note that, subject to their approval.
This section is not our section of Spring Drive.
Okay. All right, anything else? I believe that's all here. Thank you, sir. Um, so if we're not hearing from anyone else, I think we're ready, we're ready for a motion on this matter. So, council, what say you regarding, uh, this item?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move that the council, like, town council accept the planning commission's written statement regarding consistency of the zoning amendment requests with adopted land use plans detailed in section six of the staff report, and find the request inconsistent due to the two, 2018 Garner Forward Plan. Yet, I also move that the town council adopt ordinance number 2022-5153, approving rezoning CZMP 22, uh, dash, uh, one-one, as the request is still reasonable in the public interest because it will likely, uh, promote family, multifamily housing in selected areas, be of an overall design that, that keeps with the town's character, improves the property values, uh, be located and designed to create good multi, multifamily places with quality and exterior materials, open spaces, and facades.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vance, for the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Singleton. All right, uh, motion properly made and seconded. Uh, is there any other questions? I'll call for a vote. If you favor the motion presented, would you vote aye?
Aye.
Aye. If there's opposition, vote no. Okay. Motion carries with a vote of four to one, according to the chair's assessment of the, of the vote. So, um, this matter is approved, and we'll move forward. Okay, I'm now calling item, which is numbered two, um, but our sequence changed, so, uh, that would be Mr. Bowie, is that right? Tier-two conditional rezoning CZMP 2203, the Everstad at White Oak. Three by adopting the ordinance. Mr. Bowie?
Good evening, once again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, I'm going to bring back to your, um, to your attention Everstad at White Oak, conditional zoning CZMP dash 2203. The applicant is David Phillips, LCD Acquisitions LLC. Property's owned by Garner Land Company LLC, and is located at Zero, Zero Timber Drive East. The tract size is 45.38 acres, and this is a tier-two request with a master plan and written conditions, and the request is to conditionally rezone 45.38 acres from single-family residential R40, now residential R2, to master plan multifamily MF dash two, multifamily, multifamily two C260 conditional, to be adopted as multifamily A MFA C260. For the development of a residential community, the site is located again at Zero Timber Drive East and can be further identified by Wade County PIN number 1720-820256. Zoning conditions have been proposed that will restrict the range of MF1 permissible uses to six out of possible 21. Architecture and other conditions have also been proposed. Here you see an aerial view of the site. And adjacent and land, uh, adjacent zoning and land use surrounding the site. Both MF2 C260 permitted use table. Again, they have elected to limit, limited to six out of possible 21. And since our last conversation, um, there have been some updates to the zoning conditions, which I highlighted in, in yellow, and I will read those. Each residential building shall have a stone masonry water table along the base of the building on all sides, at least 30 inches in height.
Bowie, can you go back one slide, please? Different than what's in our packet. Our packet on page 132 indicates two-family dwelling, single-family dwelling, town home, condominium duplex, multifamily triplex higher, including apartment and community center.
Um, all I can say is probably an error on, on, on my, on my behalf, so I apologize to that.
One's right.
I believe this one is correct, sir.
Packet that has incorrect information to make a decision tonight.
Well, if there's an error, then yes, sir. It may be. Yes, sir.
Supposing it would be council's prerogative to accept the explanation that what is before them is, is the accurate one and could move ahead. I'm not suggesting that has to happen, but, um, I hear Mr. Councilmember Dellinger's concern, but, uh, you're saying the information presented here is, is the accurate information. Right, Mr. Bowie?
I think the chart, it says MF2, and according to the information in our packet, if, it's MF dash A, C260, that's?
Page, sorry, 114.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying, yeah. Single-family dwellings in there.
This is, the one you're showing us is MF, you're showing MF2. What's in our packet is MFA. So my question also is, which version of the UDO are we measuring this proposal against?
I believe your packet is correct, that there's a mistake on the PowerPoint, but I believe the information in your, in your packet is actually correct. I'm trying to verify that right now.
So these are applicant-proffered conditions. The, the item that seems to be missing is the single-family at the top of this table. Um, in regards to the MF2 MFA, at the time they made the application, it was MF2, so we're going by those list of permitted uses from which they choose from. If it were to be adopted, though, tonight, it would be adopted as MFA.
Valuated against the previous version. My understanding of MF2 in the previous version of the UDO, that single-family, it's not even a permitted use under any condition. Homes and townhomes in it.
I'm, I'm willing to wait as may be necessary, but I also would like to expedite our time, so if, if, uh, planning needs a little more time to sort through the question, we could perhaps move to another matter and come back to this.
I can go pull the old ordinance. My guess is that the single-family, they may have been pulling the cluster subdivision, um, because the clustering, single-family would have been a use under that.
Applied for as a cluster development. So this being applied for as a multifamily two under the new, old UDO, single-family detached is not an available option. So I think.
So I mean, my, like I say, my only question is, is whether or not they pulled, they meant to pull the cluster, single-family detached cluster. That's all I can say.
Project that has townhomes and single-family homes, a use that is not permitted under MF2. Vote and vote no, since it's not permitted.
Oh, well. Do we have a typo here, or what? I'm just trying to get back to the common sense thing again. Is there a mistake in something here? That we can fix, whatever it is?
Application is made as a multifamily two, come to us before with the planning commission, back here, it is not a permitted use under multifamily two. It should be denied. There's no amendment?
Doesn't appear to be allowed in either MFA or, or the, is this MF2 or MFA?
I elected to go with the previous version of the UDO.
It's, it's not allowed in the, as I'm reading the current one, it's, it's not allowed in the new UDO under MFA either. So single-family's not an option.
Mr. Attorney, um, would a proper course of action would be to either table or continue this manner until we have an opportunity to clarify some of the, um, the issues that are being asked about at this time?
Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Yes, sir. Go, go right here.
Jason Baron with Morningstar Law Group on behalf of the applicant in this case, just wanted to clarify, as it relates to the procedural nuance associated with when this was filed and requesting MF2 and where we are today. When this is adopted, and I think the staff would agree, that the town will be adopting an MFA zoning for the property, because the MF2 zoning no longer exists in the town. So the, the new UDO, um, MFA district would apply. I just wanted to provide that clarification. But I, and I understand that at the time of application.
Conditions that we measure it against are MF2 of the old UDO.
Right.
Period.
Yep, and I, but I just wanted to be clear for everybody in the room that MFA will be the district that will be applied to the property.
But that's not what we're measuring this project against, correct?
I, I believe ultimately, the permitted uses in the MFA district are the permitted uses that you, that you will measure it by, because it's the MF district, MFA district that's being applied to the property. I appreciate the, the distinction associated with the nuance related to how you measure it against, but ultimately, the zoning is the zoning, right? And once you adopt an MFA zoning for the property, all of the conditions that would go with MFA would go with that, except as otherwise modified as part of this case.
I've got bad news. It doesn't meet some of the conditions. I've got bad news, it doesn't meet some of the conditions that MFA.
Understood.
As well. I've looked at both of them. So either way, there's a problem, but the applicant has the option to choose which version of the UDO they'd like us to judge their project against. They have elected the old version of the UDO, MF2. Single use is not permitted. Period. End of sentence. It's not allowed.
Except for a residential cluster was allowed.
That is not what we're, they've presented to us.
Well, it sounds to me as though.
Just one, one more point clarification. We're fine with striking the single-family. We don't intend on developing single-family on the property, so we're happy with removing that as permitted use.
The master plan with the tier two, which is required to be significantly the same as what gets presented as a final plan, you can't just ditch single-family.
Well, if it's not permitted, I guess we wouldn't have a choice. We would have to.
The whole land, the whole, the whole project changes. What's been presented to us, to us, and the Planning Commission is no longer valid.
Sorry, I'm the applicant, David Phillips with Landmark Properties, 349 Haskell Road, Atlanta, Georgia. We've always intended to rent these units. There are not going to be, there's not going to be a subdivision within the property, so these will not be essentially subdivided into individual parcels and sold off like single-family typically would. This will be two pieces of land, the east site and the west site, and every unit within those pieces of land will be rented and owned, just like one apartment community would be. I don't know if that makes a difference.
Our UDO doesn't make a distinction. They are single-family homes.
Okay. I just wanted to explain, because it seemed to be misunderstood.
I've, I've read both versions of the UDO. I was on the UDO rewrite committee. They are, by both versions of the UDO, single-family homes regardless of whether they're going to be rented or not. They are single-family homes.
So the master plan does show two-family and townhomes. There are no single-family detached homes on the master plan?
Mr. Mayor, a question here.
The master plan you submitted that we saw and went to Planning Commission, and there are single-family, non-attached homes.
I truthfully can't see that. I don't know which way, but the master plan that we have seen.
These are called duplexes. You didn't submit duplexes. I looked at your traffic impact analysis, and it's based on single-family detached units and townhomes. Would you like to see, have the TIA too? The traffic impact analysis that you generated for us distinctly says, single-family detached housing, multifamily housing, low rise. Here, you can take that too.
Mr. Mayor, if it, if it is the will of the council, we're happy to take a deferral of this case for 30 days to resolve any confusion associated with the nature of the application and come back in a month. If that's the will of the council.
I personally think that's probably the best thing, but let me hear from Mr. Matthews.
Again, I guess my concern is the way this was written up, it's MF-2. If it's supposed to be MFA, and he says it was A, I mean, where, where are we missing? What's happening here is what I'm, I'm looking at an explanation.
They say there's no single-family units in this project, yet in the conditions, and I'm sitting here reading, "To prevent flat or redundant facade, each single-family unit and two-family unit will contain yada, yada, yada." It's in the conditions, single-family unit, but you just said there weren't a single-family units.
Right. There aren't single-family units, they're subdivided onto their own lots. They are, they, they will feel and act like a single-family unit.
I don't care what is less. I suppose I don't like to deny it, just move on. That'd be my topic. Anyway.
I'd support that motion.
I'll do it in a minute.
Well, um. Well, we're just. We continue this for 30 days, and let's get this thing done. Let's do it right, however we're going to do it. I'd move that we just continue it for 30 days, if the applicant's okay and our folks are okay, so we get a clarification, so we know what we're talking about here.
I want to be clear, because as the attorney, this has been council, Planning Commission and back, if they have to redo their site plan, it's tier two, I think, all of that has to come back all the way through again, because it's all wrong.
There is an issue with our definition of single-family being a detached unit on an individual lot, and what they're proposing is not individual lots. So my understanding is this is multifamily detached, right? I mean.
That is correct. Yes, ma'am.
It's, it sounds counterintuitive, because I don't know that you've seen this particular type of project before.
Then should they not have used the word detached in the conditions? Because this is each single-family and two-family unit will contain, and it should, should it not have just clarified, and because there's a condition above that says each townhouse building will contain so-and-so. That's stated pretty clearly.
In the use table in the old UDO, multifamily two, there's no single-family option, detached option, regardless of apartment, or, and it's not an apartment regardless of that.
Mr. Mayor, we could sit here and argue this point on. I'll just move that we give it a 30-day, and let's let everybody get together and sort this issue out, so we can sit here and have a good, and do this thing right. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, counsel, I'm going to recognize Mr. Matthews' motion to move it. We need a second.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Does anybody have a question on what we're voting on here? Is a.
Do we not have a question here from Mr., or a statement from Mr. Beasley here?
Okay.
If I could, Mr. Mayor and counsel, just one clarification, as councilman, as our attorney Jones said about the definition, this project by the building code is commercial. It's not built or inspected to the one and two-family dwelling code in North Carolina. Without property lines, we treat it from the state building code. By definition in law, we can inspect it to the residential code. We have to inspect it to the commercial code. So even though there appear to be single-family dwelling houses, they'll all be sprinkled. It's just an apartment building with units spread apart, spread apart instead of attached from the building code. I just wanted to clarify that it is not built to the North Carolina residential code at all. I just wanted to make that clarification.
I have a question for that. That, our, our UDO doesn't address that specifically. We have our definitions for what a single-family detached unit is and what is permitted in a multifamily.
I, I'm not debating the zoning definition as much as when, as Attorney Jones said about the single-family dwelling has to have lot lines, and this project is not inspected to the North Carolina residential or duplex code at all. I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney.
It's a commercial project to us.
Well, we, we have a motion before, so we're going to have to act on that one way or the other. Given the amount of discussion on this, and I'll confess that I didn't catch the issues that Mr. Dellinger is mentioning here, but I think we all agree we want it to be understood by all exactly what it means. Counsel, if you favor the motion to continue, I believe you said for 30 days. Is that a reasonable, do we need to specify a, a future meeting date certain, or I guess 30 days puts it there or beyond? Would that be right, Mrs. Jones?
Right. It wouldn't come back earlier than 30 days under that motion.
Okay. All right, counsel, the motion then is to continue for 30 days and not bring it back before that time. So if you favor the motion, I will ask you to vote aye.
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 Who are not in favor of the motion, would you vote no? All right, Madam Clerk, will you poll the council? I didn't hear the vote of everyone, so you'll poll, poll the council on this vote, please.
Aye.
Councilmember Behringer?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Bellinger?
Aye.
And Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Okay, Chair declares that by vote of three to two, the motion passes to continue this matter with 30 days. I regret, you know, the issues that have been, well, I don't regret, but I'm saying I feel badly that perhaps these matters weren't in some ways resolved, but anyway, it is what it is, and the council has voted to, to delay for 30 days, so that's what we'll do.
We appreciate that, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and look forward to seeing you all next month. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. All right.
Can I ask Mr. Beasley a question right quick?
Yes, sir.
You said that this project will be evaluated at commercial standards. Are multifamily projects, like an apartment complex, is that also done at commercial standards? Is it different?
Yes. Yeah, the state of North Carolina defines, we have two codes. We have the International Residential Code, or the North Carolina Residential Code and North Carolina Commercial Code. Residential Code applies to single-family duplexes and deeded townhouses only. Deeded townhouses only. The project that was just approved tonight for the rentals up on, at Greenbrier, they'll all be fully sprinkled, whereas they had deeded them, like the project down here on Aversboro, they wouldn't have to have no sprinklers or anything, because you're deeding each lot. So once you don't have lot lines, you're no longer a single-family dwelling, or a duplex, or a townhouse in North Carolina, you are a commercial building code. You can call it, it's like marketing strategy, you can call them anything you want, but for us, it's a commercial project, commercial building code, they have to meet all the commercial standards, and.
So all multifamily apartment complexes are inspected in that scope?
Yes, sir. Anything other than a deeded townhouse, or a one or two-family dwelling in North Carolina is all inspected to the same commercial standards across the board, the ADA, everything.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Any other council have a question for Mr. Beasley while he's here? Okay, counsel, you've taken action on that matter, so we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is committee reports. Are there any? None? Okay. All right. I'll go to manager reports at this time.
All right. Mayor, Town Council have a number of reports. A lot of events going on this time of year. First of all, want to recognize that we will have in our annual Veterans Day observance this Friday at Aversboro Road Baptist Church at 1600 Aversboro Road, and it starts at 10:30 a.m. And that will be, the mayor will be the emcee, so if there's anything you want to say further about that, Mr. Mayor?
No, I, I encourage you to attend if you can. We'll, we'll recognize all of our veterans, and of course, we'll recognize public officials, including our council. For those of you who are present, I probably will ask Mr. Matthews, as a veteran, to actually do the introduction of our keynote speaker. I have some information here, so.
We'll be honored, sir.
Okay. So hope to, hope to see you there, if you can make it. It's worth coming early, I think, 10:30 to hear the, to hear the music performance. So that's all for now, Mr. Manager.
Okay. Also want to just remind everyone that we're in the middle of our fall special unprepared yard waste and used tire pickup. It started last week, and the crews will continue through each neighborhood over the next couple of weeks. For more information, visit garnernc.gov, and you can go to the Public Works page for more information. The CLUE character land use element scenarios, Impact Stakeholder Advisory Group meeting will be held Tuesday, tomorrow from 5:00 to 7:00, in the training room, I believe, is that tomorrow? Is that, okay, didn't have a date, but yeah. All right. Culture Club, which is an internal social and club wellness kind of club within the town, will be, have a special event out at Lake Benson Park, and I think you all got an invitation for that. Summit Awards Chamber event Thursday, November the 10th. Pre-event party and red carpet starts at 5:00 p.m., and they will have awards program at 6:00 p.m. And we will also have the third steering committee meeting for CLUE on Monday, November the 14th, from 5:00 to 7:00, right before the Planning Commission meeting. And as Mr. Hodges mentioned during the economic development update, there will be a launch Garner graduation Thursday, November 17th at 6:00 p.m. at White Deer Park Nature Center. Please RSVP by Wednesday with the town clerk if you can.
If those dates probably already been submitted as invitations, I, I don't have my device before me. I'm just trying to decide if they're already in my calendar or not.
The steering committee invitations were sent out for all the steering committee meetings. If you check your town calendar and don't find them, please let us know, but they were sent out. Mr. Trezenberg sent all of them out previously.
Okay.
One on tomorrow, what, the CLUE, I had the 14th and 16th, but I know one's a committee.
It's the Impact Steering Stakeholder Committee, and that's Mr. Dellinger and Mr. Vance represent counsel on that particular steering committee.
I have it correct in my calendar, okay.
Sorry, when I hear CLUE.
Those are subcommittees that got broken out for certain.
And I have them in my calendar, I just didn't have.
Right, okay.
Okay, thank you.
The last item I had was a discussion on the town council meeting schedule for 2023. I know a couple of months ago, we brought some changes to our benefits, which also included maybe some changes to town council meetings, and I think at the time, we were thinking that it would be beneficial to staff to eliminate one of the December meetings, and as we looked in, at the calendar closely and talked more internally, we believe that it would be more beneficial to eliminate the January, the first meeting in January. Reason being, once you have a second meeting in December, we go straight into the Christmas holiday, and then after that shortly, we go into the first of the year, the new year, which doesn't allow a lot of time for preparation of agenda items, and a lot of you may be traveling, a lot of staff may be traveling. So we think it's more beneficial, instead of eliminating the December meeting, to eliminate the first meeting in January. So just wanted to run that by you as a change from our previous discussion. This year, I mean, well, in 2023, the first meeting in January would be on the 3rd, because the first is on Sunday, which means, I would be, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the first is on Sunday, so the first Monday is the second, and so that would make, you know, we, we would likely, I think, have the second off because of the holiday being on a Sunday. So that would make our meeting on the 3rd, so. Lot of confusion there, and quick turnaround, and, you know, would it be in the holiday season there for a couple of weeks? We think it'd be more beneficial to eliminate the meeting in January versus December going forward.
So the first meeting in January of '23 will be the 17th?
Yes.
Okay.
And we would still have a work session also in January.
We don't have a work session in December?
We do not have a work session in December, so.
Thumbs up on that, counsel? Okay?
We would do that going forward as part of our meeting calendar. And if at any time, there's any situation where we need to have a meeting, we could always call a special meeting at any time if something comes up, but on a standard calendar, we'll start eliminating the January 1st meeting, so.
Can you repeat that one more time about January? I just want, for an old guy here, I'm just trying to.
Okay. All right. So, yes, go ahead.
Just tell us what day we're meeting.
Is there a better way to clarify?
I would just say, we, just recommend that we, we not have the first meeting in January.
Right, right, right. Yes. We, we would not have the first meeting in January, because by the time we have the second meeting in December, there's not enough time to get an agenda packet ready and out to you because of the holidays.
It will not be a meeting on January 9th, is what you're telling me.
January 3rd.
January the 3rd.
Okay.
The first is on Sunday, so townhomes close on the 2nd, so it would supposedly be on the 3rd, but that's after holidays, so it'd be on the 17th.
And we'll resume the regular schedule from that point forward?
Yes.
For the rest of, yeah.
Matthews, a tone looking at his, at his phone. He's, he's old school here, he's got his calendar outright on.
I'm trying to get this right. I'll figure it out.
I can catch up with you after the meeting.
Yeah. Send me a text.
We can look at the calendar, so.
I'll put it on my phone.
Well, Mr. Trezenberg sends us those CLUE meetings in there on my phone. I mean, he sends, I mean, you know, y'all send us invitations, one.
Anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, sure.
I think we got a thumbs up right for that.
Yeah, we did.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Yeah. I think that'll work better for everybody concerned. We will now hear from our attorney, if she has a report for us.
Yes, just briefly, I sent out the revised Walters Buffalo Development Agreement that contains staff's responses to the developers revise, revisions that were made. that contains staff's responses to the developers' revisions that were made subsequent to the public hearing. The public hearing notice will be posted and mailed this Thursday. So, if you have any comments before that, the revised agreement has to be made available to the public. And then the hearing would be continued to the November 22nd meeting in conjunction with the rezoning coming back on new and old on the agenda.
Okay.
Letting you know that schedule. No, thank you.
Council reports, start with Ms. Behringer here and work from there.
I've been asked by the owner of Lee's Shoes and Repair about property across Farm Road from his property, I think it borders on Fayetteville Road and Farm Road. He received a notice of a neighborhood meeting to discuss this property being rezoned. About it, which I don't, so is, do we?
I don't know, I'd have to check our pipeline. And Mr. Treasenberg's not in the room, so.
About a month ago, maybe a little bit longer?
That's ETJ, is that?
Yeah, there's a proposed. We've had a pre-development meeting for the property that incorporates all of that, including the auto sales lot is one track. And they were given, told about their neighborhood meetings that they needed to do from the, our pre-development meeting and planning printed out the addresses and for them to notify everything on that piece of property.
But that's coming through Garner, not Raleigh?
Yes, it is a town of Garner, ETJ, it is under our jurisdiction.
Then the next thing is, I had asked one time in the past about the broken traffic medians or islands or whatever within the town. They're in terrible shape, old, and they have grass growing up. And I know some of them belong to us, some of them belong to NC DOT. And are we on that and what can we expect as far as repairs?
Ms. Behringer, we have made DOT aware of that. And so, it's on their list of repairs. And so, I don't know where it is on the list of repairs, but we know we've been in regular contact, our Public Works team, on repairing those. So, it's on our radar screen and we can see if we can follow up again, but we've made them aware of the issues.
All of them are on our DOT's responsibility?
That is my understanding.
Okay.
We will follow up with them.
All right. And then the last thing is, I saw this on the, I don't know if anybody at the town has been notified, but on the, someone saying, can the town please help us? There's a tree at the corner of Johnson and Curtis, Johnson Street and Curtis Drive and School Acres that is obstructing the view and the street light. And that's about all the information I got on that. They wanted to know if the town could cut it down and they didn't say which quarter it was on.
We can look at it. Whether we can cut it down or not, we may be able to trim it if it truly is. But if the tree's on private property, then we may not be able to just cut it down, but we'll.
There were no details, it was just a frustration thing.
Yeah, okay.
Just.
Okay, Ms. Singlin, I'll go to you next.
Yes, clarification on something, action we did earlier tonight on the one-way Cindy Drive. That is on the new section Cindy Drive between where it connects to existing Cindy Drive up to the, up to the roundabout, not, excuse, not roundabout, I'm sorry. Yes, roundabout. It's not all Cindy Drive.
I believe it was proposed to be just with enough distance from the roundabout that cars can go around there, but.
Yes, so the people on Cindy Drive don't have to go out that way. They can still move on their street. It's just a new section that it is. I just want that clarified because Mr. McCormick, who lives there, sent us an email and asked. I thought, God, I didn't even think about that, to be sure. It's just a new section, okay?
Right, I think staff looked at that to make sure that all the existing driveways could continue the movements that they have.
Can't come out of the roundabout from the new section into the existing Cindy.
Thank you, thank you very much. I appreciate you answering that, thank you very much. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Good, Mr. Dillinger. Okay, thanks, sure. I'll go to Mr. Matthews now.
Nothing this time, I'm good.
Okay, and Mr. Vance?
Yes, I'd like to say that I had the opportunity to attend the Veterans Day Parade at downtown Raleigh on October 5th. It was a good event, good attendance, and it was glad to see, good to see everyone out post-COVID, back, getting back to some sense of normalcy. So, it was a good event. Looking forward to the one on Friday at Averusboro Baptist Church as well. That's all I have.
Thank you. And council, I need to let you know that the Mayor's Association of Wake County usually has a, well, Christmas gathering in December. This year, it'll be on Monday, the 19th. It'll be here in our town, we're hosting it. So, if that's something you desire to attend, you and spouse, significant other. Let's see, shall I just have them get in touch with you, Ms. Gibson? But that needs to be done fairly soon, right? We've got a deadline on numbers and so forth, so.
Did you say that's going to be in Garner?
It is. It's going to be at the Marquis.
Grand Marquis.
Grand Marquis, yeah. That's right, on a Monday night. Okay, so let her, let her know as soon as you can, if you will.
I think that's the first time we've hosted the Mayor's Association Dinner since I've been here, so, yeah.
Okay, yeah, probably so. We may have the Hall Sisters sing a few songs for us. I shouldn't say may, that's their plan right now. But it'll be a regular meal and your chance to interact with folks from across Wake County.
That was Monday, when, Mr. Mayor?
19th of December. Okay, that's all I had. I know in addition to the closed session that is noted on the agenda, Mr. Vance wanted to add another matter under closed session, under basically personnel, I'm not sure what the site is.
By the site right here, NC General Statute Section 143.318.11A6.
Okay, council, if you're ready to go into closed session, I need a motion on basically those two items, the one before you and the one Mr. Vance just mentioned.
So, move.
Okay, and a second here, all right. All in favor of the motion to go into closed session, vote aye. Aye. And that is everybody. So, as quickly as we can, we'll move into that. Or maybe we don't have to actually physically move. We're good here.
Council is back in open session having gone into closed session to discuss some real estate issues with staff. There's no specific action taken but some guidance was given and it'll be a matter that'll come back to council for further discussion and consideration. And then the second item was a personnel matter that the council discussed as it relates to evaluation and some time frames were set for that. Those were the only two matters that we dealt with in closed session so we're now back in open session and a motion is in order to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made seconded, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Okay, and it's the order and I declare this meeting of the Gornertown Council to be adjourned. Thank you all for your patience tonight.